Okay, welcome everybody this evening, Tuesday, August eleventh, twenty twenty. It's now six P M. We're gonna go ahead and open up the Board of Appeals Hearing. Number one, open the public hearing to hear comments and or questions to determine if the structures at two oh two Victoria Street, seven oh four South Eighth Street, three seventeen School Street, and four oh six F M seven ninety-two are in violation of ordinance seventeen dash three and should be considered as a dangerous building and possible action and or abatement of a violation not excluding demolition. Item number, I'll go on to number, item number two, consideration and possible action in regard to the structure located on the property in the Kennedy Edition Block fifty-five, lot W half of six, also known as two oh two Victoria Street, to determine if the structure is in violation of ordinance seventeen dash three and should be considered a dangerous building and or abatement of a violation not excluding demolition. Do you have a presentation?
Um, hey, good morning, afternoon, council. This is Joel Me. Uh, hopefully y'all have had a chance to look over y'all's packets and see the information that I provided in there for y'all. Uh, two oh two Victoria, I'm sure y'all are all aware of that place. It sits right next to the Baptist Church. The gentleman named Lurch used to live there. It definitely is a health hazard. It is very bad. There's the roosts are falling in, the floor, the animal feces. It is very bad and it needs to be dealt with.
From the pictures you sent us, it does look like it's in bad shape and the inside...
Yeah, it was. We had about a eight inch rat come out when we entered the facility and the church, they're starting to move over to the church now.
Oh, wow.
Yes, sir. That's pretty bad.
Joel, have the owner contacted you at all?
Uh, the, from what my understanding, I have sent multiple letters to the owner. Uh, the man that was staying there, it's not his place, is no longer living there. From what I've been told, he is living with his son in Beeville. So it is uninhabited.
No, but um, what my question was, have you heard from the owner? I guess Mr. Moses? Have you heard from him at all?
No, I have no response, no ma'am.
Okay.
Whoever that is with your phone in the background, will you please mute it? You're, we can't hear what's going on.
Joel, when did you take these pictures? The ones I am looking at right now?
Oh, let me get on here real quick.
I mean, I've been to the house before, maybe like a year or two ago, and it was pretty bad then.
This, this is fairly, this is right around the time we, I did the uh, the yard placard, the three points of notification. I had Officer Davis escort go in there with me and...
Okay. So it's currently recent here? Okay.
Now Joel, after tonight, if we deem that this place is possible, um, what's the next step? What, what, what else has to be done before it can be removed?
We will have to wait till next councilman meeting next month, but if y'all deem it a dangerous building, I can start taking bids and come the day of our meeting next month, if there is no appeal or nothing is stricken with it and it stays the same, demolition may start the day after our council meeting.
From the looks of it, it, it is very dangerous.
Yes, sir.
You've got, you've got open ceiling, you've got the rafters are exposed, you've got roof gone, um...
Yes, sir. I don't see how anybody was living in it, actually.
Yeah, the structure is really not livable.
No, sir.
Any other, any other concerns, questions for Joel, from anybody?
I do, Brandon, I have one question. What happens after, say we go ahead and deem it, uh, uh, whatever, uh, what happens to the property after that? Like, once it's demolished, if we go that route, it's demolished?
They, the owner will be sent a bill for the demolition of it, and if it's not paid, then we can, we'll file a lien against the property.
And so, I, I know that we've done a lot of liens on the properties before, and I don't know where we're at on that, but what is the next step after the lien? Is it possible to, I mean, I don't know at what point you foreclose on these liens, but...
It is possible, yes ma'am. I'd have to look up the actual legal statute, you know, the time on it, but yes ma'am, we do availability to close on those.
Okay.
Joel will not be able to sell that property until the Attorney General makes his final ruling, is that correct?
If I am in understanding, yes, sir.
Yeah, is that the case?
I do believe so, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for Joel about two oh two Victoria Street? There's no other question? Was that?
No, I don't have any other questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's fine, okay. If there's no other question, is there a motion? If someone wanna entertain a motion?
I understand a motion that this built, this structure violates ordinance seventeen dash three of the City of Kennedy's ordinance, and it is not fit for a living.
I, I got a motion from Leslie, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Cindy. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion. Amanda Carrow, please?
Councilor Bionis?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Item number three, consideration and possible action in regard to the structure located on the property in the Laurel Heights, Kennedy Edition, Block one, five fifty-two of eight seventy-one, Lot eighty-five, two, also known as seven oh four South Eighth Street, to determine that the structure is in violation of ordinance seventeen dash three and should be considered as a dangerous building and or abatement of a violation not excluding demolition.
Joel, that's the one that we had the fires on?
Uh, yes, sir, Joel, that is the one on uh, seventh street that, or excuse me, Eighth Street that has caught on fire twice. There is um, a lot of traffic that would go in and out of that place at night.
You've had no luck getting in touch with the owner on this one either?
No, sir. No response, and there's been multiple letters sent out, multiple newspaper.
And prior to putting this on the list, Joel, did you try getting in contact with this person before even, um...
Yes.
Putting it on this, for the gen- he still, a month ago, and he still wasn't answering, correct?
Yes, this has been a while back that this has all been going on with high grass and not cutting it, and I, we've had to go in there at least once or twice and cut the grass with no response.
Okay.
And just, is this uh, property already have a lien?
Um, I'd have to go through my files and look on that, I have a bat park right in front of me.
Is there more, uh, do you have more to this file other than beginning back in nineteen?
Um, I know there's some on my computer, but I cannot find hard files for them at the now.
Okay. And this is the one where they have, like the...
I'm sorry, what is that?
This is the one where they had issues? Okay, this is the one that they've had issues with, is like drugs and stuff?
Well, apparently the neighbors were seeing people going in and out of it after it caught on fire, and then it caught on fire the second time.
Okay, but it's the second fire, okay.
Yes. As far as drug calls, I'm not sure what the police at hell had on that.
Joel, is this a nineteen hundred dollar tax bill that's delinquent also?
Uh, yes, sir.
I think they're, aren't they all delinquent?
Uh, pretty much most of them, yes ma'am, because these are pretty much structures that have been left alone, that...
Yeah.
Either the people are no longer here, didn't leave it to anybody, or they just don't wanna pick up the, an answer.
Yeah.
Amanda, there's no way to tell where that background noise was coming from?
Yes, sir, I, I muted a couple of them already, I'm, I'm watching it.
And nobody's on the line, Amanda, nobody's on the line for property three, all right, for item number three for that property? No one called in to speak about it?
No, no, nobody that's come to, you can ask and see if you would like, but nobody that has um, brought it to my attention.
Okay, all right.
Joel, no one, no one is responding to these letters that we're sending out?
No, sir. Most of these properties have been properties since I came back in two thousand and seventeen and had to go out and take care of and cut. There has never been a response on that I know of. These are, well, besides one that burnt down, I didn't have much information on that one, but as far as the other ones, the one coming up on eleven five, that's been abandoned for years.
All right, thank you, Joel.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make a motion that the property at seven oh, hold on, let me get the address right.
It's seven oh four South Eighth.
Yeah, the property at seven oh four South Eighth, uh, is in violation of code seventeen dash three and uh, is a public nuisance.
And a dangerous building?
And a dangerous building.
Yes, sir. I'll have a motion.
Motion by Leslie, second by Justin. Any more discussion on this? There's no other discussion. Amanda, please, Carrow?
Yes. Councilor Bionis?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Question asked. Item number four, consideration and possible action in regard to the structure located on the property in the Nichols Two Kennedy Edition, Lot seven, Lot E and a half of one, two, also known as three seventeen School Street, to determine if the structure is in violation of ordinance seventeen dash three and should be considered as a dangerous building and or abatement of a violation not excluding demolition. Joel?
Yes, uh, y'all probably all know this one on School Street before you get to our yard. Um, very trashed out, a lot of junk outside, it has caught on fire and burnt, I believe, once or twice even. Um, a lot of traffic in and out, a lot of um, police calls over to that house. Um, it was even to the point where no electricity, no water, and the neighbors were calling up complaining about extension cords running from their house.
That's the one across from the old Head Start, correct?
Yes, sir, it is. Yeah, we got caught on fire there back in February.
Where is it at, Brandon, across the street from what?
The old Head Start.
On School Street? Okay, on head, across the street from Head Start.
Right next to those two duplexes, little town homes.
Nobody's living there, right?
Uh, there was somebody living there, but they are apparently incarcerated.
And she, Mrs. Villanueva, has not made contact with you at all?
I have heard from the daughter months and months and months ago, when her son was there, and I have not had a response from multiple letters I have sent.
Okay.
Do we have paperwork on that?
Yes, sir.
It's the next email, um, Leslie.
I know there are a lot of files, I just threw y'all all the information for each house I had.
It's the next email.
Okay.
Yeah, so these, these photos that you have in here, I know you have recent ones, but they go date back to like August of sixteen, two thousand and sixteen.
Yes, sir, yes ma'am, that was before my time, yeah.
Right, so it's been...
It's been going on for a long time, yes.
Yeah.
And being that it's been, it was just got caught on fire recently, it, yeah, it, they went in there and knocked some walls down, I remember that fire, and yeah, it's, 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 they have seen better.
Yes.
All still standing is what amazes me.
It was bought in oh three by this girl, by Ms. Gurella?
I believe so, Leslie, and in skin care of her daughter, I believe she is not around anymore.
Does the daughter live in Kennedy?
No, sir. Last I heard, last address I have, she was living somewhere in San Antonio.
Well, it's clearly not livable, shouldn't have anybody living in it.
No, sir.
Car is in the yard, y'all will have to tow that and get rid of that also?
Leslie, those are old picture from old cases. Uh, just the pictures that are in the eight pictures too, or six pictures in a set at the very beginning, or nine pictures, those are the newest pictures. That car is from an old case years ago.
Okay.
But there is a lot...
Why is she the purchase?
Excuse me?
Nothing, I saw a date of two thousand and seventeen, so it was still after she purchased it, so...
Yes, yes.
So your pictures are the colored pictures at the beginning?
Yes, sir.
The roof is open?
Yes, sir. The flooring is burnt and has holes in it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that this uh, structure on um...
Now this is the meeting.
Huh?
Hello? Okay, continue, Leslie?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the house at three seventeen School Street is in violation of ordinance seventeen dash three, it is a nuisance and is not livable and a dangerous building.
Got a motion by Leslie?
I'll second that.
Second by Cindy?
No, that was Brenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brenda, okay, sorry Brenda, second by Brenda. Motion by Leslie, second by Brenda. Any more discussion? There's no other discussion, Amanda, please, Carrow?
Councilor Bionis?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. Moving on to the last one, item five, consideration and possible action in regard to the structure located on the property in the Kennedy Edition, Block ninety-four, Lot five, also known as four oh six F M seven ninety-two Street, to determine if the structure is in violation of ordinance seventeen dash three and should be considered as a dangerous building and or abatement of a violation not excluding demolition. Joel?
This, um, if you are headed at the Y at seven ninety-two and seventy-two, you have the little Baptist church, you have a manufactured house, then you have an abandoned house, and then some more manufactured homes, it's that abandoned house right there on your right. Uh, it's been abandoned as long as I can, I've been here in Kennedy, we have constantly done the upkeep. Um, when I did go in to take pictures with Officer Davis, somebody has been camping out in the backyard and entering the house.
And we don't know who was doing that? I don't know? The city doesn't know?
No, we walked through the house, take the pictures, and we looked in the backyard, somebody had a fire pit out there with rocks, and you could tell that somebody was setting up camp there.
Okay.
Not anybody that should be there, we'll say that.
Yes, sir.
Joel, when y'all notice these type of situations, do you make the um, police aware of it?
Yes, the police know about every house that I'm bringing down, that we're bringing up for demolition or dangerous building, yes. And the officer was there with me when we saw this stuff in the backyard and the beaten grass going into the back door of the house.
This one's owned by Joe and Anita Luna?
Yes, which are both, I believe, deceased.
Okay. And they didn't have any kids?
Uh, not that I could see, no, sir.
Okay.
And the condition of it is just...
It's...
It's not...
It's not as bad as the other ones, no, sir.
No, yeah, exactly, that's, that's all I'm saying, say, it's not in the best of shape, but it's not in good shape, so...
No, no, sir, not at all.
Is the roof open on this one also?
I'm trying to get to my files there, Leslie, give me one second.
I was looking at the pictures, I didn't see any pictures of an open roof, but...
Um, I think there was some openings in the ten, I don't know if I got pictures of them. Uh, yes, actually on, is that the, no, that's through the wall there. Um, I know there was some light there, Leslie, but not like the other ones were, sure.
Okay. Joel, you think this house could be saved?
The structure wise, it still had some sound bores. Um, I don't know how it could be saved without the people being around to save it, but I'm sure somebody could fix it up, yes, sir.
The floors and the inside, Joel, how, I mean, what do you...
Um, they were getting pretty weathered, they're just basically plywood floors.
Okay.
And actually, somebody, I guess whoever was going in and out of it, apparently had done some cleaning up, I guess they didn't wanna be laying in dirt.
Is it an option, I'm just curious, that we clean up the debris and clean up the exterior and lock the house, like, but uh...
Pour it up? Board it up?
Board it up and put a notice on there saying that if you're the property owner and you want to get in here, these are the things you have to get in compliance with first before condemning it and deeming it a dangerous building?
Um, I'd have to do some research on that, Justin, sir.
Cause it, i- 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 I mean, it's definitely a condition, but I don't know if, if I would consider this one out of all four a dangerous building and needs to be condemned, I don't know, how, what do you think, Leslie?
But that's what I was thinking, you know, the roof is not open, uh, you've got some areas that need cleaning up and it needs boarding up to be a safe, so it's not uh, a nuisance, but it's not a dangerous building yet because the structure is still sound.
And I'm, I'm kinda agreeing with you, or I am agreeing with you, so I w- I wonder can, can we have the city order to clean the property and all of the debris and put that as a lien to the property owner and also board it up so it's, you know, it's not getting traffic by?
Get in it?
Yeah, right, right.
Yes, sir, we can clean it up, keep our equipment and hours in our lien.
Okay. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying this one's a dangerous building yet because it's really truly not yet.
Okay.
Hasn't been burned or anything, that's for sure, so.
No.
Yeah.
It isn't, but what happened? Yeah, and how long do you leave it boarded up?
Counselors?
Till, till whenever?
Uh, counselors. Go ahead, Mr. Lynn.
Um, I am not so certain we can board it up or lock it up. Uh, I don't believe that's in our purview as a municipality. Uh, our course of action would be, as Mr. Mead has stated, uh, we could go out, we could um, uh, when the grass gets high, we can mow it, we can keep track of our uh, our team members' time, our equipment's time, fuel and all that, and we can continue to send the bills to the property owner until such time that we decide to go ahead and file a lien on the property. Um, and we can take it through the um, uh, the system in that manner so that the end result would be the city foreclosing on the property because of the liens that were placed on it because of the money that was owed the city for keeping it up. And then at that point, um, we would be able to uh, put it out for bid um, once we do that whole process.
So we can get it, we can clean it up, but we can't board it up.
That is correct.
Police need, and the police need to be aware of it and they need to drive by it more often to make sure nobody's visiting it, especially at nighttime.
Hello, what, what? Have Joel, is, do we know it has back taxes or is the property owner maintaining the taxes?
No, I, but I'm trying to get to that, my computer's hanging right now, um, I believe that has quite a bit of back taxes on it.
I think it's all on the tax collection.
Forty-eight seventy-eight.
Twenty-eight seventy-eight, and then they have uh, there's another one, three thousand on it.
Yeah. Three thousand, ten and twenty-two cents.
Yeah. And it looks like they filed a lien back in two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen hundred and seventy dollars?
Yeah. That was the lien.
Ain't on that building.
All right, any other question? Do I have a, does someone want to entertain a motion for item number five?
I'm gonna make a motion that the city continues to clean, that the city clean it and keep the grass mowed uh, and keep the time so that the owner can be billed for that time.
Leslie, with that, can I just have a question?
Go ahead, Justin.
What was that, Justin?
Hey, Leslie, it's me, Justin, so I, one thing to that, and I hope you would want to add this or not, but when I was looking at the pictures provided in our packet, should we maybe include, you, you said debris and trash, but should we also include the structure that like carport or add-on? Cause the add-on or carport, whatever that is on the back end or side of the house.
It's all, that's all falling over?
Yes, I would say, let's think, I would.
All, all, for me, all of that is debris, and I think all of the debris needs to be t- taken away. All the excess furniture and stuff that's sitting out there, because all of that is a safety hazard.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll second that motion if we can include that, and I, and, and with that second, I, I think we should do like I was looking in past times, bill the, the homeowners, and if that results into a lien later on, I'm okay with that too, if you are, Leslie.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I'll second Leslie's motion.
I got a motion by Leslie, second by Justin, any more discussion on this item? All right, Amanda, there's no other discussion, please call roll.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. And with that, we'll go ahead and close the public meeting, time is six thirty-eight. We'll move on now to the City of Kennedy regular city council meeting.
Um, Brandon, give me one sec.
All right, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, just let me, let's open, let's, give us a chance to open up the next.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was moving too fast. Does anyone know we are already?
I'm ready now.
Get it open.
Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to the regular city council meeting. The City of Kennedy, August eleventh, two thousand twenty, that was set for six PM this evening. Like to welcome everybody to the, our regular city council meeting. We have a quorum present, Amanda, will you please call roll?
Counselor Breonis?
Present.
Counselor Wynn?
Here.
Counselor Stein?
Here.
Counselor Kano?
Here.
Counselor Meyer?
Here.
All present.
Okay, moving on to number three, Leslie, will you please see the prayer for us?
Yes, sir.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us the time, the knowledge and understanding to perform the roles that you've given us. We ask that you would watch over us and help us to make good, sound decisions in the ongoing growing of our community. Help us to use wise wisdom and counsel so that we can make the best decision. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amanda?
Amen.
Moving on to item oh four, citizen comment, Amanda, any citizen comment?
Yes, sir. The, the first one is from Angelo Miller. Good afternoon, council members, my name is Angelo Miller. I am a resident of Kennedy, Texas, and I have lived for the last seven years. The cost of water in Kennedy has gone skyrocket in the last four months. I went from paying a bill of fifty dollars a month to three hundred dollars a month. This is absurd and this is not acceptable. Myself and my wife are still residents here at our home. Granted, we do have a small garden and do water that garden. But even with our garden, our bill would be no more than a hundred and twenty or, around the month of April and May. This year it has gone up to three hundred dollars in April and May and June, July. We have been monitoring, monitoring our usage and cutting back our usage only to remain at three hundred dollars. I have spoken with other citizens of our city who are also having same problems. This council needs to take a very close look at what the heck is going on with these pr- pricing, with this price increase. Could it be the equipment that is being used to monitor water usage is malfunctioning? Are the meter, there's actually reading the meters? Could it be pri- price gouging because of the pandemic? Or is it just a total disregard for our citizens and no one seems to care? These are questions that need to be investigated and answered. This council needs to immediately find out what is going on. We are being held hostage to pay the water bill the water so we can, so we have to find the money to pay the bill. As you know, times are really hard right now due to the circumstances in our country dealing with the virus. Lots of people are out of work. Lots of people are living from unemployment check to unemployment check. I would encourage every member of this council to look into this problem that has gotten completely out of hand. Y'all know that water is a necessity that every citizen needs and counts on. This is a high priority situation that I hope every member on this council takes very serious. Hopefully in the near future, you guys will resolve the problem. I will be monitoring this and I will be following up with this council by the next scheduled meeting. And then he left his phone number if any council member would like to reach him. Okay, and the next one is from Alberto Baderama. And it states, the following is a public comment on behalf of the City of Kennedy Parks and Recreation Board per Ferris Overby. Ferris Overby, president of the Parks and Recreation Board, and the members are asking the mayor and city council to table or take no action on agenda item eighteen until, as a board, we can meet with the city manager to be aware of the content of agenda item eighteen or anything that pertains to the Parks and Recreation Board. Thank you, City of Kennedy Parks and Recreation Board. And I have one more. This one is from Joe Baker. And it states, my name is Joe Baker and my family lives here in Kennedy. I listened to the recordings of the past two city council meetings and I would like to know why the mayor did not attend either of these meetings. I believe the residents of Kennedy deserve an explanation. Anyone who runs for mayor should understand that holding that position comes with certain responsibilities and none of these are more important than attending and presiding over the city council meetings. In addition to this, it was reported that the mayor is not signing important papers that need to be signed, and as a result, this is slowing the progress on various city projects. Maybe there are circumstances that I am not aware of, but I would like to know why the mayor is not doing his job. I would like to thank Brandon Breonis for stepping up when needed to take on the role of mayor as mayor prospant in addition to his own responsibilities as a city council member. He has done an outstanding job with little or no notice ahead of time that Mayor Sutton would be absent. If the mayor has decided that he no longer wants to do the job, he should resign. It is as simple as that. One more thing, I would like to publicly ask the mayor to cease and desist with his use of Facebook to harass, intimidate, and threaten myself, city officials, city staff, and other members of this community because this is clearly conduct unbe- unbecoming of an elected official. You know what it is called when someone posts information that is false with malice aforethought with the intent to damage another person's reputation? In Texas, it is known as defamation of character and it is a crime. Mayor Sutton, please stop doing this, the people of Kennedy deserve better. And I also have a public comment for item, agenda item number ten that I can read before the actual item. And that is all.
Thank you, Amanda. Moving on to item number five.
Amanda, I have, hold on, Amanda?
Yes, ma'am.
Amanda?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the attorney on the phone?
Yes.
Yes, I am. Okay, I have a quick question, um, Amanda, the comment that you're gonna read for the next item, is that from Mayor Sutton?
No, ma'am, it's from a citizen.
Okay, um, so for the, this is a question for the attorney. Uh, the mayor reached out to me and um, asked me to read his public comment, and he said that he, he actually gave it to Amanda and Amanda was told she couldn't read it. Uh, one of the council members had to read it, is that correct?
One of the council members does not have to read it, it would be at the choice of a council member. Um, but Amanda could not read it, that is correct.
Uh, one, if, if it was sent to any of the council members, they could read it?
It could if, if they chose to, yes, it would be at your discretion and your choice.
Did any of you, other of you get the comment from the mayor?
I did it.
I did it. I got it also.
You did?
I did.
You wish to read it?
No.
If you want to read it, you can, it's pretty lengthy though. I have, I, it's on my I don't have it on my, I don't think I have it on my tablet.
Muted.
Hold on. Yeah, I have it on my tablet.
Do you want to read it?
It's uh, I, time, time. There's twenty-three, there's a, there's a letter and then there's twenty-three items on this.
I don't think the twenty, I don't think the twenty-three items, I think, I think just the comment that he had. I don't know, I don't know, what do you think?
I can read the comment.
Go ahead.
General, general public comment from, for April eleventh, twenty twenty. My apologies for my absence this evening, I'm ill. But once was an honor, has become humiliating. My loyalty is to our citizens, and I do severely apologize, sincerely apologize to each and every citizen and the city employees for not demanding extensive reference checks. Single-handedly, I have dropped the ball. I am having a hard time getting over this. I cannot change the fact and uh, I accept full responsibility. All I can offer is a sincere apology for not doing the due diligence in demanding thorough reference check. I, I have been threatened, bullied, and I have been threatened, bullied, and publicly humiliated. I'm being retaliated against and oppressed for speaking out when the auditor and many other professional contacts contact me with concerns within this city. The public has the right to know and has, do each of you. What you, what you do with that information is your business. I have been elected by the public to ask tough questions and share information for transparency in efforts to build public trust. More alarming is the fact that harassment is clearly unacceptable, intimidated, discrediting, and damaged me and all others who speak out. This behavior is toxic, unhealthy for the entire city and unacceptable in any government. By law, council's actions are effective after three days of passing as explained to William Lynn prior to our last council meeting. This was not mentioned, uh, to, this was not mentioned to you last month. My signature is not required. Constantly, I constantly sign checks, phone to the bank, and sign various paperwork for two years as sent, as presented. I did not refuse to sign things. Communications were intentionally, um, hidden by the city. Maybe this theme, maybe this streams from me being told to go home a time or two or from me being threatened with arrest when I questioned a derogatory statement made directly to me after the city of Kennedy, Texas. Uh, maybe I've been a city, uh, maybe I've been at City Hall too much reading paperwork with my own eyes, reviewing records minutes, recorded minutes from other cities and comparing them, comparing them to what's going on in Kennedy. I've noticed a definite pattern here. Then there's COVID nineteen issues. City Hall has closed repeatedly for fear of spreading infections. What would, what would make any of you believe you know what's safe for my health or for the health of those around me? You all refuse to attend face-to-face meetings. You would not expect me to go in and out of City Hall to sign paperwork that really doesn't need my signature. Upon receiving email instructions, email instructing me to tell residents to conduct, to contact City Hall for their, their city council person, asking me with their concern and being accused of making up citizens' concern, I realize uh, let's see, I realize inconclusive difference, uh, do exist. Citizens contact citizens who, citizens contact who dare choose to they contact. I was elected as a buffer. I've continued hearing, at hearing the needs of the citizens, answering their calls, returning calls, texts and emails, and forwarding them, forwarding their concerns to the city council and the city manager, no matter the time of day or night, as I've always done, check your email. The city doesn't like this and becomes vindictive toward me, members of the city board, and city employees who communicate with me. This remains, this reminds me of a serious vision which occurred within our school district back in two thousand and one. We're still recovering from this and I certainly don't want anyone experiencing this again. In all of, in all of this, I must think about what is best for Kennedy. But that's for the citizens and I've come to the conclusion in effort to prevent a that, the devastating total in, in nine months, not a single one of us will sit on this council. We may not, we may want to focus on leaving something for the future city council to work with versus leaving a huge mess for others to sort through and figure out. Though previous conversations at different times over the past several months I've expressed to Leslie, Brandon, and Brenda, I have no intention of running a campaign nor hanging a, hanging a single sign. I've since withdrawn my name from the ballot for the November election and originally, and a, an original notarized form that three dash sixteen has been delivered to the city secretary to buy peace for the community. I've done what I believe is best for all. I've been honored serving the great people of Kennedy and working with so many great employees here. I will definitely miss them. I'm sorry. I will definitely miss them. With all of this and lack of support from each of you, I've searched and answered and solutions. While reading through the social media post, I came across a post that really made sense. The post read, "The place values you the right way. If you are not valued, do not be angry. It means you are in the wrong place. Those who know your value are those who appreciate you. Never stay in a place where no one sees your back. Simply perfect." At this moment, I realize I am in the wrong place and the city cannot define me. I'm many things. I'm a father, a husband, a brother, a son, and a friend. Any stigma you have of me does not define who I am. At this point in my life, whatever you all allow to be said about me, tonight is okay. Please understand when we pass, God will not ask me to answer for what you all have done. He'll ask me about what I've done. James D. Sutton, of the people and for the people. That's it.
You all there?
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie, for reading that. Are there any more comments? Okay. Okay. Moving on to item number five, departmental report. Mr. Lynn?
Okay, so the city secretary will lead off on this.
Okay.
The city do not have any new hires for the month of July. Any city hall continues to accept payments through our drop box at the end of the ramp and the front door of our office. Customers can also call and make payments over the phone with a debit or credit card. Late fees and disconnects are still being waived for the month of August. Employees of City Hall have been working diligently to serve our customers while taking preventative measures with COVID nineteen. Uh, in, in reference to the Myo Music Festival, I have spoken with all the artists that were under contract. They have all been very understanding of the cancellation and look forward to being able to come to Kennedy once we set a new date for the festival. All employees have received a copy of the personnel policy and they were received the week after our July council meeting. Every employee signed a form stating that they received a handbook and it has been put in their personnel file. For the month of July, the city municipal court collected six thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-four cents in cash and checks, zero hours in jail credit and community service, twenty thousand two eighty-five, twenty thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents in credit card payments, and zero dollars in transfers. The total amount received by the municipal court is twenty-six thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and forty-one cents. The city of Kennedy is aware of the billing issues some residents are experiencing. We are currently working to resolve any factors contributing to the billing issues. And that is all for the city secretary report. Um, if I can, um, can I go ahead and do the fire department report since I, since I'm ready on?
That's fine. Go ahead, Amanda.
And this is the July monthly report for the Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department. Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department responded to five calls for the month of July. One was a B removal, one was a hay field fire, one was a fuel fire, one a vehicle fire, and one was a two-car accident. Due to COVID nineteen, the department has been unable to have its regular monthly meetings with its members. Brush truck was sent to a San Antonio repair shop to be looked at to do what they believe has been a transmission issue. There is a last, last call out that it was used. We were unable to get the truck over forty miles per hour. The repair shop got in touch with us today and after looking over the transmission and fuel system, they found no issues nor repairs needed. The truck is ready for us to pick up. And there were no new members signed for the month of July. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Joel.
Good evening again, council. COVID science report for July. We had fourteen permits, twenty-eight inspections, sixteen roll-offs, uh, four dangerous building violations sent, and one citation written turned over to municipal court. That is all.
Okay, I will go ahead and, and talk over.
Twenty-three million gallons for the month. We had a total water loss of three hundred sixty, three hundred thirty-six thousand gallons. And, uh, everything there seems to be going really good. Uh, streets and parks, we had sixty-nine service orders and our requests completed. Uh, we put out eighty-one point seven cubic yards of asphalt and twenty-three point nine cubic yards of base. Uh, for the wastewater treatment plant, we had no violations for the month of July. Our daily flow average was one point two billion gallons per day. Our monthly flow was thirty-eight point five billion gallons. We had one inch of rain that we could account for and we had no SSOs reported to TCQ. Uh, on our distribution and collection, we had one raw sample that came back positive for coliform. We took repeat samples, uh, they were taken in accordance with TCQ rules and regulations. The repeat samples came back negative. Uh, that one sample that came back positive, every month we're required to take a raw sample on one of the wells. So every once in a while, taking a raw sample, they do pop positive for coliform, so it's really no big deal. You just re-sample and resubmit it. Uh, and that is prior to treat, uh, cause it is raw, uh, no chlorine added. So, uh, we had zero water and no, and sewer, no services for the month. We had twenty-one re-reads. We had thirty checked for leaks. We repaired fifteen water leaks. We had four sewer backups and we jetted sixty-four sewer mains. We had a miscellaneous service orders of ninety-one that we completed. And then I'll go to our project. Uh, we have completed the Pullen Street replacement of the water and sewer lines uh, for Pullen Street. And, uh, we're working now to, uh, place ads and take bids on the paving of that. Uh, the, the WIT water line, we had a section of line that needed to be replaced that was in between two new sections. Uh, that has been completed. And then, uh, our Maytag water line replacement for Maytag has been one hundred percent complete and we signed off on that. And I do apologize to the people out there for the problems that we had in our final tie-in on Maytag. Sometimes some things are just, uh, doesn't go your way, especially at midnight, so I apologize for that. Uh, phase two at the wastewater treatment plant is under construction. Uh, they're starting to make some headway with that. Uh, it takes a while to get started, but that is going. And our water treatment plant annex is completed. Uh, we're still trying to, uh, get our finishing touches on the internet so we can completely move into the building and we have to have the internet for the skater. But that's all we need to be able to be moved completely into that building as far as office and, uh, our components to operate our water system. Uh, we're still looking into a possible water, water line extension for Kennedy apartment complex. This, talking about going in on one eighty-one. Um, we replaced about two hundred and forty-eight feet of sewer main on Graham Road from Escondido going back up the hill. Uh, that's where some customers has had problems in the past. Uh, so we thought that we would, uh, replace some of that line because it's such a heavy flow. It's impossible to camera, so we just started replacing part of it and, uh, see if that would help also. And, uh, let's see, uh, that's all I have really for, for right now. If anybody has any questions.
The computer that you're, the internet that you're waiting on, where we at on that? What needs to happen on it?
Well, they had to run a new line from the box to the building, from the pedestal, and I believe that's done. Uh, we're waiting for the final tie-in into the building and then Cheryl Mercer with Mercer and Controls will come out. And, uh, once the internet is, uh, where it needs to be, then he will come out and transfer everything over. Uh, so we're probably looking at sometime, I, I'm gonna say, hopefully by the end of next week, that should be completed. We're, we're just had, we've just had a really hard time getting the internet required up there on that hill. So, but, uh, Amanda and, and everybody worked real hard and we've come to a solution and like I say, hopefully that will be in place by the end of next week.
Alright. Any other questions for Jerry? Alright, moving on to the police chief report. Amanda, is Chief on line?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, so I have, uh, I have my three reports. I'll start off with, uh, emergency management, just a quick update. Um, I know the COVID stuff is continuing. Um, fortunately, it does appear in Texas that there has been, um, kind of a flattening of the curve since, uh, July. Um, since the mask, uh, has gone into effect, the numbers per day have dropped. Um, Kennedy, we're still seeing a rise, but a lot of that is coming from our, from the, uh, prison. Uh, so it's, we're hoping that it is kind of flattening off. Uh, and so it's, we're hoping that it is kind of flattening off a little bit. We have had at least, uh, three natural deaths, uh, in Kennedy that the people were COVID-positive. Uh, they don't, it's hard to specify if those are actually COVID deaths or not. They say they're from complications from COVID. So I'm not really sure whether those would be counted in the, uh, state numbers, but, um, we have had three of them here in the city. Um, have you saw, Carnes County last weekend hosted an event, uh, testing event, they had about two hundred and sixty tests given. Uh, the last time they did it was over five hundred, so the numbers were down a little bit, but, um, hopefully they'll bring another one if we need it. Uh, our businesses, I've been doing, been checking, uh, pretty well on our ordinances, uh, the mask ordinance. In our businesses, I check a lot of businesses, and everybody seems to be complying really well. Um, every now and then you'll see somebody not come in with a mask, and the, and the business owner will tell them, you know, they have to put a mask on. Uh, so far, uh, we've not written any tickets or anything like that. Uh, so far, everyone appears to be following the rules, so we appreciate that. For our police department, I have a couple of, uh, things that we did this month. Um, so we have changed, I, I don't know if y'all are paying attention to some of this, but with all the, um, the protests around the country, um, after the Michael Floyd death, the Texas police chiefs, um, have recommended two changes to policy, use of force policy, uh, on banning chokeholds, and what they call the duty to intervene, which means that an officer who sees another officer committing a crime or unacted is unlawful, that they have a duty to intervene, failure to do so, uh, can cost them their job or criminal actions. Uh, that was recommended by the, the police chiefs, we have implemented that in our policy already. Uh, and also change, train our officers on those two, uh, changes to policy. So those are already in our policy as of today. Um, our traffic officer continues to do really well, I've, I've been really happy with him. Uh, last month, he wrote seventy-nine truck violations, uh, sixty-six in June, seventy-nine in July. Um, he's, he really does a good job of stopping the trucks out there, and, um, I'm hoping that in the next few months, those numbers will start going down as trucks start following the truck route. Um, the department now, we started a chaplain program, I don't know if y'all have seen that much of that, but we now have a, a chaplain that works with us for, uh, we'll bring him out usually on death scenes or, um, scenes with a lot of trauma in the family. Uh, he comes out and he helps with the family to give them, uh, what he calls pastoral care. Um, it's a big help to us. That's, uh, Pastor Singleton from First Baptist Kennedy is serving in that role for us. Um, he'd also be a, um, a, he, he can help with the department as well for officers who might need somebody to talk to. Uh, he's in that role as well. We recently had, uh, our computer audit from DTS, we had to have an, uh, audit on our computer security. Um, we had that audit, we passed everything. Um, and so I'm good for three years, I don't have to worry about that anymore, at least for another three years. I moved our speed monitors from, they were over on Seventh Street and Fifth Street, now they're back on. I put one right in front of high school with the start of school, I thought that would be a good spot to have one. And then, uh, moved one back on Main Street, uh, so we could track the number of cars on Main Street, uh, so it's a good one there. And then for our animal control, um, we did, they had a total of thirty-five calls last month. Uh, picked up fifteen dogs, uh, seven cats, also, uh, fourteen dead animals that they had to pick up. Um, most of those were taken to the rescue group. Uh, we also picked up two snakes, a possum, and two raccoons. Uh, they wrote one citation and three warnings last month. And that is my report. Any questions?
Chief, I got a question real quick. The, um, law with the tags and ex, uh, the state had till July, was that extended, license plate, the license plate tag?
Yes, so that is still in effect, um, if you're, uh, if it was in March or later, uh, you can, it's still, uh, there's still a moratorium on it. You, you can still go without, uh, changing your, or updating your license. Uh, the governor's not yet extended that.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Any questions? Anybody else got questions for chief? Moving on to item number six, city manager report. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, counselor. Good evening, council. Um, so staffing, um, we had three finalists for the, uh, director's position at the parks. Uh, we've conducted two interviews as of date, and we have one final interview to do later this week before a decision is made as to who we may offer the position to. Uh, of the three candidates, I will tell you that, uh, two of them, uh, have experience, uh, in, uh, talking to, uh, groups, if you will, uh, to bring groups in. So, um, experience is limited that they have, but nevertheless, they still have experience in some context. So that's kind of encouraging there. Um, earlier today, uh, I had spoken with our, uh, code enforcement officer, and, uh, COVID-19 has really impeded the ability of municipalities, uh, staff to get the proper training that they need when they need it due to the cancellation of in-person classes and trainings. Um, a lot of the stuff that we go through, uh, especially in code enforcement, um, they need to be face-to-face, uh, they need to be sitting there in front of an instructor with a book, uh, and, and talking to someone who's done this for many, many years. And our current code enforcement, uh, director has been unable to attend these classes and to get this necessary training that he needs, uh, to serve the resident of the city to the best of his ability. Uh, he and I talked extensively today, and, uh, what we decided was that, uh, we are going to move him into a different role within code enforcement, uh, and that we are going to, uh, look for a director that has all the current certifications that we need, as well as one who can do building inspection. Uh, that's a very key thing for the city of Kennedy. Uh, currently, if you were to, uh, ask Mr. Mead, who does your building inspection? Uh, it is a company called Bureau Veritas. Uh, they're pretty good at what they do, but they're highly expensive. And, um, while the city should make some revenue off of things, uh, there's very little margin for us on that. And it's very difficult to get Bureau to travel down from, uh, Austin or Dallas, uh, whenever we need them at times. So having our own building inspector would be a huge benefit to us. Uh, we've already had the position established, as my understanding, uh, from speaking to, uh, counselors since I've been here and, uh, uh, team members and staff, uh, we had a building inspector at one time, so this isn't, we have to create something, we just need to find a person for that role, so. Uh, while I'm very appreciative of Mr. Mead and everything he has done, uh, I, I, I agree with him wholeheartedly that it's a disservice to Mr. Mead, uh, to continue to put the burden solely on him, uh, to do this, uh, especially not having the training. I think the direction we're gonna go with Mr. Mead is to get him the training that he needs and to, uh, get him a mentor that he can go out with and those kind of things, so. Um, I wanted to tell Mr. Mead, good job, he's done a great job, I am by no means disappointed in him whatsoever. Uh, I believe that the direction we're taking, uh, is, uh, better for him and better for the, uh, city of Kennedy as well. So, uh, it's kind of a sad thing, but, uh, it's also a potential positive thing there as well. Um, in addition, we've got, uh, some operations things that were going on. I have been in contact with the city auditor. Uh, the auditor has made a tentative commitment to me to have a rough draft of our fiscal eighteen nineteen audit by Wednesday, uh, it'll be tomorrow. And of course, that's gonna be barring any unforeseen delays on, on the auditor's behalf or, uh, hiccups they find where they may need some more information, but as of the conversation I had with him yesterday, it was looking pretty positive, they were gonna get us a rough draft for all of us to go over and take a look at, and, uh, so, uh, we're, we're all looking forward to that. Uh, as, uh, council is aware, we're, uh, in the budget cycle. Uh, I did send out an email informing council, but I wanted to make it publicly known, uh, that we are tentatively scheduling the budget hearing, uh, a workshop, if you will, for Thursday, August the twentieth at six P M. Uh, I tried to make sure that I met, uh, Councilor Myers' prior obligation, uh, on Tuesday, that we didn't impede that or, um, anything there, so. If anyone has an issue, please get with me, uh, it's, it's a fluid date, uh, so we can always change it if need be, but I, I felt it was important to go ahead and just put a date on the board and thumbtack it so that we could put it in our minds when we were gonna meet. I, I will have a clean copy of the audit to you guys, not the audit, the budget to you guys, uh, uh, next Tuesday for you to review. Uh, there'll be a lot of changes in the budget, um, but you'll see, I'm, I'm hoping you like what we do with it. Uh, we're gonna make it a little bit more transparent, uh, than what it was, so, um, there'll be some things there. Um, last month, council, uh, charged me with the task of, um, finding out, uh, about the stadium lights that we have down at the sewer plant. Uh, I've, um, interacted with Musco, and, uh, according to Musco and what they've seen, we have approximately twenty, uh, total poles down there. A pole being what we'll call completed, uh, a completed assembly, and there's a, there's twenty of them. And each of those poles contains between three and nine, um, uh, sections. And, uh, so I asked Musco if they could test them to see if, uh, if these things worked, uh, if they had some capabilities to do that, and if they could also give me a, a fair market value for these things. The council would have an idea of, uh, where we were. Well, uh, Musco could not, uh, test them. Uh, the, the cost would have been exorbitant to bring in a generator capable of generating enough electricity to test them, uh, which I understand. Uh, so we have to go off of the premise that they were working when they were taken down, so we hope they work if they go back up. Um, as far as the cost goes, uh, we're looking at the whole lot of everything out there. Uh, all twenty poles being worth somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, thirty to sixty thousand dollars, and that's gonna be a very rough number. Uh, as everyone knows, uh, value lies in the eyes of the purchaser. So whatever someone's willing to pay, that's what they truly worth on the market, but uh, Musco, uh, shot me a quote of about five hundred dollars a section, and some of the poles take three sections, some take nine sections. So depending upon everything, we've got a range of about thirty to sixty thousand dollars, so. Um, that's kind of where we are on that. Um, to kind of piggyback, uh, Mr. Higgins a little bit, um, on, uh, June the tenth, the city received a letter from TCEQ. Uh, and, uh, there's a lot of in response to, in response to type stuff, but uh, the short, the short version is, TCEQ conditionally approved construction, uh, at our, our O plant. Uh, they wanted us to add, um, some, um, gotta make sure I get this right, sodium hydroxide containment facilities. Uh, Mr. Higgins, uh, worked on that for me, took a look at that, found out that the city of Kennedy had them at one time, but they were never utilized. And so, uh, I had a conversation with, uh, the lead from TCEQ, uh, on July the eighth, and he and I talked about this, uh, for about forty minutes on the phone, and we came to the conclusion that it was best if the city of Kennedy would submit an appeal to that letter. And so on July twenty-ninth, I submitted an appeal to Mr. Jaeger, uh, of the TCEQ, uh, asking them to, um, set aside their requirement to have to have the sodium hydroxide containment facility uh, based upon the fact that our pH has never dropped below seven. Uh, we had them and never used them, and that we are, uh, in the process of bringing a new water source in that will not need them. So that's, uh, it's kind of in the hopper right now, and we're waiting on TCEQ to get back with us on their determination as to whether or not they're gonna grant us this appeal or not. So, um, that's, uh, the report as far as that part of my report goes. Does anybody have any questions they wish to ask on that? Okay, if not, I'm gonna move into the presentation of the mansion. Um, I, I do have a question for council, did you all receive the chart I sent you? It was a bar, bar graph.
What was the heading?
It wasn't, it had a title.
Sports complex expenditures.
Got it.
Okay.
Got it.
When I get to that part, we are gonna go over that in some detail. Alright, so if we look at the little sheet that I've been giving you guys every month, um, what you'll see is that we are in month ten of our budget year, and we should have consumed, uh, just a little over eighty-three percent of our budget. Um, so when we start and we go down to our revenues, again, uh, we need to always try to keep, and, and I, I say this every month for the benefit of those who, uh, aren't on here every month. Uh, when it comes to revenues, uh, you want to see your, uh, consumed number higher because that means you have taken in more revenues than you budgeted, and that is a good thing. Um, unfortunately, we have not. Uh, the general fund is sitting at seventy-six point seven-three percent, and the water and sewer is sitting at sixty-nine point oh-six percent. Uh, so total for the municipality, our budgets are sitting at, uh, revenues are at seventy-one point three percent. So we're about twelve, maybe about eleven and a half percent down, uh, from where we should be just to be breaking even with our budget. So revenues are still underperforming the budget, they're not what they need to be. Uh, on expenditures, we want to see numbers that are less than eighty-three percent, uh, because that means we're not spending money, which is a very good thing. Um, and so when we look at the numbers, the general fund is at seventy-five point three-four, uh, the water and sewer is at seventy-three point eight-two. Our total for the municipality of expenditures is at, uh, seventy-four point three-six. So we're, we're about, uh, about eight, eight point nine seven under, uh, where we should be. So we're outperforming the budget on expenditures, so the expenditures are compensating for the, uh, lack of revenue. Um, our liquidity in the municipality is still pretty solid. Uh, our general fund has, uh, seven point one eight-four million, and it's tax pull account. Our hotel motel has about two point four two-nine million. Our water and sewer has one point eight-five-two million, and our paving fund has about two point four four-seven million. For a total of about thirteen point nine one-three million, just in our tax pull account, and that's all earning interest for us. Uh, not very much interest, but, uh, something is better than nothing. Um, as of the date, I put these, uh, numbers together. We had three point seven three one million cash at Texas Champion Bank that was, uh, available to use. And so our total liquidity for the municipality with our cash and cash equivalents is, uh, seventeen point six four five million dollars. is uh seventeen point six four five million dollars. Uh, we're doing pretty good. Uh, we're pretty financially solvent, so and we're not gonna run out of money, so if y'all out there. Um, so as we move through these things, uh, again, I uh present you guys with the breakdowns of the projects that we're working on. Uh, the first one you come to in that little packet of stuff would be uh say page four, it has the word Carizo Waterline. We might have to decide of it. Uh, we have currently, as of July thirty first, already uh spent one point three million dollars on the Carizo Waterline. Uh, most of that has gone towards the uh feasibility study uh that we're doing for Texas Land and Ride Away, uh Burnin Associates, uh the the hydrologists uh that we have. Um, uh, at Wet Rock, Hanson Engineering is a good portion of that as well. Um, so uh they they they've been assisting Texas Land and Ride Away. So uh, that's where that money has been expended from, the majority that is gone. So uh, just so that we know where we are on that. Uh, our street paving fund still has uh a little bit of money left in that. Uh, we still have uh right around four hundred thousand we're gonna be able to use. We are holding on to that for the project uh at Pullen Street. I know there's been some concerns. I've heard talk around times at the H E B and the Walmart and places I do go. Uh, I overhear people talking in the aisles, and half of them don't know who I am, so I let them talk so I can get a get a grasp, gr- grip of what's going on. Um, I understand that we had some projects, and they're on my one whiteboard in here, um, Boo and North Third, West and East Lavacas, um, that the council had uh desired to do, but as we spoke about a couple of meetings ago, fixing Pullen was the priority due to the fact that it's the only means of ingress and egress uh for the park at Escondido on that side of the street. So um, you can't get out park. If you come in off of one eighty-one, you're captive. The only way out would be down Pullen Street. So uh, that's kinda why we've done what we've done. And uh, we certainly will get Boo and North Third and West and East Lavaca taken care of uh as we move forward in the municipality. Uh, so I wanted to uh bring that up and address that. Um, the uh moving on, we have uh the sports complex, and uh I'm gonna set that one aside for right now and come back to that, 'cause there's a lot more on that we need to talk about. Um, so I'm gonna move right to the uh the other pages uh where we have the uh Train C and and the Versosmosis Plant. Um, that project uh has spent about five hundred thirty-nine thousand year to date, and it was over budgeted about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Uh, so, but it's wrapping up, so that'll all be going away hopefully at the end of this fiscal year. Um, a wastewater treatment plant, um, and they're looking pretty good. Uh, phase one's uh finished up with about three hundred and sixty-three thousand left in its budget, and uh phase two still has about six hundred and seventy-two thousand. So we're pretty good there as far as budget goes on those. Uh, we still have ninety-two thousand for the manhole study, uh, if we wanna go back and do manholes that's been allocated. And then at the airport, the taxiway lighting improvements, uh, they have about two hundred and forty-six thousand uh remaining there if they can use. Um, we also have a civic center project that um uh, most of you who have have talked to me know I am very, very uh hotly looking at the civic center right now. I am uh, the wheels are turning as to what we'd like to see, where we'd like to be, uh, trying to get a vision for this. I've been uh asking questions of people uh who'll talk to me about anything and everything regarding it. Um, and right now, uh, I have a pretty good grasp of what the overall vision is. I've spoken to Councilor Kano at one time, and she had uh imparted some wisdom to me about some things that they originally were looking for, so I've never forgotten what she has said. Uh, I've taken everything I've looked at and combined it with that, and I'm I'm quickly arriving at a plan uh that I will be presenting to council, uh hopefully very soon uh as as to a vision for a community center. But uh, I believe we're gonna have something that's gonna be very, very beautiful, and it's gonna serve not just the residents of the City of Kennedy, but it's gonna serve uh the residents of Karnes County as well and and any visitors that we have. So uh, I'm looking forward to when we have that discussion. Um, so that's kinda where we are there with that. All right, so um, we go back to the sports complex. Um, uh, this is the biggest topic in time right now. So, here's where we are. As of the printing of the financials, the sports complex budget was two hundred thirteen thousand four hundred forty-two dollars over budget. Um, that number was as of July thirty first. Uh, I pulled that same account today, and that account is over budgeted four hundred forty-eight thousand forty-one dollars and forty-four cents, which means our seven point five million dollar sports complex, we have already spent near seven point nine million on it as of today. Um, I did a breakdown on that, or I had to ask the ladies to help me here at City Hall, and they have done a great job helping me put this together, um, which resulted in your uh charts that you have there. Um, one thing I need to tell the council uh before I get into this chart real quick is that several months ago, when we had a council meeting and I was predicting this this was gonna be over budget, uh, Councilor Meyer had asked me about where would we get the money from. Um, at that point, it it had not yet been revealed to me that you all had a separate checking account for this. I was under the impression uh that this money was coming out of a pooled cash account, um, and that the uh sports complex was just a fund in the back office system. Uh, so when I answered Councilor Meyer, I did so in good faith, uh, letting him know and the rest of the council know that all we would need to do is just, you know, have a have a meeting, pass an ordinance, move money from one line on to another. And speaking with the city secretary recently about this uh and looking at this, she informed me that uh we actually had a checking account that they were moving money from into the pooled cash account. Um, that checking account now has one dollar in it. There's no cash left in that account for the sports complex at all whatsoever. Um, so what does that mean to the City of Kennedy? That means that any dollars that are to be spent at the sports complex will come from unbudgeted funds that are budgeted elsewhere in this municipality in our cash. Uh, so every check we write from here on out is coming from oth- other places in our budget. Um, it's taking money away from our ability to do infrastructure. It's taking away uh money to pave roads. It's taking away money uh to do anything uh as these deals come in. So um, you all need to be aware of that. I am also aware that after this statement tonight, the four B's gonna wanna ma- make payments on this. Uh, and I will tell council I am one hundred percent against that. And that may sound a little harsh, and people will probably wonder, why in the world is this guy against that? I'm against it because it will not let the municipality know exactly what is spent on this. If the four B begins to write checks autonomously, separate from the City of Kennedy, then we're not gonna have a an accurate depiction of what this complex costs us and what we're gonna need to recoup on an R O I later on throughout the years. We're not gonna have a true number. And having a true number is imperative whenever you do something like this. Uh, you've got to have a business plan. This is like starting a business, and you've got to know what's going on. You've got to do your scannings and your SWOT analysis and things like that, all of which I know was not done because I haven't seen them. Um, so I I I need to make that very clear as to my position as the city manager on this. Council, of course, is in charge, and council can always choose to uh not adhere to what I'm recommending, and that is y'all's prerogative. Um, the, I was curious as to where did the money go? Where did the money go? I found out that the money went to the various organizations that are on the graph I sent you. As you look at that graph, it becomes very clear that three organizations stand out like a sore thumb in this whole sports complex thing. Hellas Construction, R L Roadie, and Hanson Engineering. They are the three organizations that got the bulk of the money. Uh, between them, they got just over uh six point six million dollars of the seven point eight. Three organizations, six point six million dollars. Um, the interesting thing about it is, is I did some research on Hanson Engineering. And I went back uh back in uh back into twenty nineteen and and a little further back than that. And I noticed that Hanson Engineering was billing the City of Kennedy on what is called a do not exceed amount. All of the invoices would come in with with limit amounts on it, and they were taking money off those limits. The sports complex limit was three hundred thousand dollars. And that is where the City of Kennedy, when they wrote this budget, uh, came up with the three hundred thousand dollars uh for the budget for the professional fees part. The issue is, along about December of twenty nineteen, right before the turn into twenty twenty, Hanson Engineering quit billing on that and moved to an hourly rate, and they did so without notifying the city council. I went back through the minutes. There's nothing there. There's nothing in the minutes where the city council, the City of Kennedy, was ever made aware that Hanson Engineering was billing on a not to exceed and then changed it to an hourly rate. Um, that's important because you're over budget on this project, and if Hanson Engineering had only spent three hundred thousand, we would still have money available in this account to spend. R L Roadie and Hellas, they were over budgeted as well. Uh, most of their costs were uh budgeted in because they were construction costs. They were part of the construction. Where this project went awry was in the professional fees section. And I have looked at it and looked at it and looked at it, and I've tried to make the problem be somewhere else, but it's like a sore thumb. It it it's just a glaring red eye sore where this project went awry. And the council needs to know that. You need to know exactly where your money was spent, and these residents need to know that while we're at seven point eight million dollars today, there are two items on this agenda that could total even more. And that's, this is not including a ticket booth, an archway, fencing, none of that stuff. So, uh, this is, this is, this is where we are at this. And one of the things that I don't know that the City of Kennedy and the council knows, but I need to make you aware of, and and the city secretary was the one who found this and showed me, of the one point two million dollars that Hanson received, one hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars of that came from the hotel occupancy tax. And it was paid to them during the sixty day waiting period that the city was required to wait when the bond was issued. And I'm pretty sure y'all weren't aware of that. So this is the research that we've done, and this is what we found on this particular issue. And uh, the complex is, while it looks beautiful, uh, it's it's already over budgeted, and it's just gonna go deep in the hole. So. Do any of you all have any questions?
I got a question, Mr. Lynn. At where we sit right now, what we approved tonight and what else needs to be taken, Carol, what do you think will be over budgeted when it's all said and done?
Well, the one good thing is, anybody who gets a order to contract is gonna be on a do not to, do not exceed. Um, I'm not gonna permit change orders. I only change orders for days, no money. Um, I've seen the numbers, and I'm gonna guess that, given the numbers of the bids that came in, the bids are gonna come somewhere in the neighborhood uh of around seven hundred thousand for both buildings total. So you add that to the seven, eight that we have, that puts us at eight, five, and that's eight, five with nothing. No more engineering costs, no archway, no nothing. So we already projected back in March that we were gonna be two million over, and it's gonna come pretty close to that, councilor. Um, I I I can really see us being a minimum uh of nine million on this uh complex, which would be about one point five over. Really easy, really easy.
I have a question, Mr. Lynn.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so how would you, this is Brenda, I'm sorry. How would you not be able to track the money if uh four B was gi- uh, four B was giving it to you? How would you not be able to track that money? Cause you said that you wouldn't be able, we wouldn't be able to see what the total cost would be if they were writing a check. But wouldn't they have to keep a budget, only to keep a, you know what I'm saying, a ledger of what they were spending for the rest of the complex? So I'm not understanding how you would not, how we would not know.
Okay, that's that's a good question. It's a fair question. Um, so what I said was if the four B paid autonomously, okay? So if the four B says, I'm gonna pay for this, and they write a check, um, my budget system or my back office system that has this uh complex in it would not record that expenditure. So every time I pulled a report and gave a report to council, I'd be giving you a report that showed this number here uh from the checks that we write in the city, not the checks that the four B was writing. So we wouldn't be able to track that and have an accurate depiction uh every month uh unless the four B gave me, gave me their books uh to go through and look at and have that stuff. Um, so.
Couldn't four B?
But could, but could four B write a check that goes back into that account that has the dollar in it? Uh, what we could do is, what we want to do is, we want to know what the total number is. That's the important thing. So now that we're over budget, we we want to continue to let that account go. So when I say let that account go, I'm just talking about a bookkeeping number, not a cash number. And what we could do, uh, and the four B would would probably have to pass a resolution uh to agree to it, is that we, if the city, could pay all the bills at the park. And then we could then turn over those bills to the four B, and the four B could write a reimbursement check every time we write a check. And that way, we would have a an accurate depiction because we would pay the bills and code it to the account, and then the four B would just give us the money and we'd put it back in our general fund, and then we could use the money for, you know, whatever we were gonna use it for to begin with. Um, I'm just not certain, though, uh, even with our half cent sales tax that we give them, with the oil futures being down for the next year, and we're gonna be around forty-one dollars a barrel. only gonna be around forty-one dollars a barrel. I'm not so sure royalties are gonna be enough, uh, with everything. I, I just, I just don't know. And I know that Mr. Kiesling and I have talked about their reserves, but the reserves that they have, they set aside not to pay the daily expenses of, uh, the complex. They set that aside if they ever needed it to reimburse the city for the bond. So there's a difference why they set that money aside. And so I don't think it would, you know, I don't think they would wanna tap into that to, you know, put up with a bathroom or a concession stand. So that's, that's just, that, that's kinda where my, my statements are coming from on that.
Is there anybody from the 4B on the line that could help answer some of those questions? That if they could do that, if they would, we would pay the bill and then they could reimburse the city back? Is there anybody on that could probably help and, and chime in, kinda help us with this conversation? Amanda, is there anybody on?
Not that I'm aware of.
Brenda, really and truly, that would need to be, Brenda, that would probably need to be a separate, that would probably need to be a separate meeting altogether with 4B and the council so that we could come to some type of understanding. Because this is just, uh, review of the situation right now. There's nothing where we can make any movements or anything, but we would, we do wanna ask them to make themselves available so we can do that, so we can talk.
Yeah, I can, um, put on there- Mr. Lynn, is there any way that you could do that? Is set something up so we can visit with them and kinda go over what, you know, what our next plan is gonna be? What are, you know, what we're gonna decide to do and how we're gonna take care of the rest of it since we are over budget? And, uh, maybe we can get a clearer picture from what, what they're standing and what they think they need to do. And, you know, with all of us talking together, maybe we can come up with a good solution.
Um, I, I definitely can reach out to Mr. Kiesling and them and, 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 you know, apprise them of the situation and then let them know that, you know, we'd like to get all, all our heads together, you know, and talk about it.
I agree, I think we should all sit down and visit it and put our heads together. I think we're all intelligent enough to come up with a good plan.
I'll do that.
Don't you agree, Justin?
Yes, I mean, I think it's a good idea for all of us to get together, um, and discuss, you know, what options are available. Um, with that being said, we have to realize that this is a business that we are running. So we need to make sure that we don't over invest on the complex and maybe, and I'm just saying maybe, I'm not saying that's what I'm for, cause I, I mean, we need to hear both sides, but maybe the auxiliary building B and C be a phase two down the road. You know, that's something like we did with the, uh, Escondido Creek Parkway project, is we wanted to wrap it all up in one project, create one beautiful park. Um, and we had a healthy, we had a very healthy multimillion dollar, um, money saved up so we could go straight into phase two. But then once we got our estimate, or, uh, compared our engineering estimates from the estimates that came back from bidders, um, we had to scale back our project and phase two is probably not gonna happen as soon as phase, uh, one is completed. Um, but we're still going to plan for it. So this might even be something that we look at and maybe we don't get auxiliary building B and C right away, but get the park operating, get the business going. And then maybe the council, cause I won't be here after November, but maybe the council will look at this again in a year or two. Or if, um, 4B has the money set aside separately, that's not, that they didn't previously obligate just in case the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar yearly debt obligation for it, if they don't have any additional funding. Uh, is these, I mean, we're not gonna be able to really create an agreement tonight. So there's no right solution in my mind until we can get both council and the board together to try to look at some different issues.
I agree.
That's right.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it's like, like you said, it's all of us together sitting down trying to figure out what's gonna be the next plan and what's gonna be the next phase. You're right, you may be able to wait for those buildings, but they may have another idea and we don't know those. So again, if we can get all together and sit down and visit it and talk about this, I think maybe we can all-
Yes, ma'am, I, I agree with you and maybe we could like a special workshop, special meeting where we're just dedicated to this one issue, one solution.
Exactly.
I agree. Sounds like a good plan to me. Mr. Lynn, can you set that up for us?
Um, I can make that happen as long as the 4B has the date.
Thank you kindly.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Any other, any other questions? About the sports complex? If we, one, one last question, Mr. Lynn. If, and I'm, I'm asking if, not saying this will happen. If we can't come to some kind of agreement with 4B, we will ultimately have to end up paying for this sports complex over budget and win where that have to take place.
Well, councilor, I mean, that's a tricky question to answer. Um, you know, ultimately, the taxpayers fund everything with their property and their sales taxes. Okay? So we exist and we, we do business because of the taxes we, we, we generate. Um, when you take on debt, um, you've gotta take on debt intelligently. Uh, you don't ever borrow more than you make at the bank on an interest rate. So if you're, if you're paying four percent interest, but you're only getting one percent, it doesn't make sense to borrow money. Uh, you should pay cash. Um, you know, it's, it's like when we look at this, uh, we could, we could feasibly take the money from the reserves, which I would be extremely totally against. Uh, if you remember in my interview, I was very much a proponent of making sure we had money for a rainy day when the oil fields run dry. Um, and our economy, our economic structure in Kennedy is still based on agriculture and oil revenues. So we are still a captive municipality to the volatility of agriculture and oil. Until we get our economic structure changed and we redefine ourselves, we have to err on the side of caution with everything. What money we have in reserves, we really should be holding tightly. But, I mean, like I said, we, we have, you know, uh, we have, we have the thirteen million. Um, so we could feasibly take a million and a half out of there and put it into the fund and pay for it all and be done. Um, if council so desires.
I wouldn't say that yet. I think we should still, you know, talk with 4B and kinda get our heads together before we jump into that.
Yeah, before we, before we even talk about what the, the what if, we need to sit down with 4B. This was a 4B project that we helped them get the bond for to allow them to maximize the use of their money. But for us to start talking about using, uh, using monies that we were not planning on using before we talked to 4B, that's not prudent at all. So I think what we need to do is just like we said, wait, have the conversation with 4B. Let's not start any conversation on something that what if and would I and all that because that's not necessary yet. We need to have the conversation with 4B and know if they've got a plan to pick up that difference. And if they do, formulate it and figure out what works best for all concerned and move forward on that.
I agree.
I agree.
Well, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that because we were in a predicament last year when we went ahead and passed this and we went to the what if, uh, something catastrophic happened. And, well, we didn't see COVID nineteen happening and it hit and we're, we're in, we're, we're hurting. That, that's just saying honest truth, we're hurting. And if, that's why I say you gotta think about the what if. If we go to 4B, we gotta be optimistic about it, yes. Something falls and doesn't go right like we, we hoped to. We told the taxpayers they weren't gonna pay a penny on it. That's, that's what we told them. That was the big-
That's why I'm, that's why I'm saying-
I hear you, Leslie, and I, I agree. So we gotta ensure, to make sure that the taxpayer doesn't pay a penny of it.
Counselor, I, I think-
Figure this out. Before we jump that far, let's back up a little bit. Let's do what we said, let's talk to 4B, let's get a plan in place. Now, if we have to jump to that, then we're, of course, we're gonna tell the city, hey, you know, this is what the outcome is. But let's not go there yet until we know where we're going. Because you don't wanna stir up, you know, let's figure out this first before we start something that we're not ready to stir up. Let's talk to 4B, let's get a plan in place, let's go that route first before we start, like Leslie said, start talking about all these other what ifs. We don't, you know, let's, let's go one step at a time, guys. Let's talk to 4B, let's have a good conversation, let's get a plan in place, then we'll go from there.
And we, Brenda, we still have the option of not doing those two buildings and stopping where we're at, finalizing some stuff and opening the complex up and start using it, creating money from it and then use the money that's created from it to, 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 to bu, to do those other two buildings and phases.
Exactly, Leslie, I agree a hundred percent with what you said and with, with, uh, Justin said. I agree completely. If we have to stop here, then, then we may have to. But let's not jump into getting money out of our reserve yet until we know what our next step's gonna be. Until we know, hey, we are gonna stop here, we're gonna go ahead and open the complex. Or 4B says, hey, no, we have the money to take care of the rest of this, let us take care of it. Then, okay, but let's have that conversation first before we start saying, you know, we're going into reserve money cause we're not there yet.
And I don't think we're gonna ever get to the point of, well, we wanna use reserve money for it. We're gonna do like we said, like, uh, Justin said, we're, you know, it's a business. You open it, get it going, create revenue, take that revenue, use that revenue to grow your business with by adding more. And there's just no reason to have that type of conversation.
Exactly, I agree. I'm right behind you, Leslie. I agree totally. Uh, we're on the same page, Leslie. I think you and I, Justin, are on the same page.
Alright, so I'm gonna get with Mr. Kiesling and the 4B. Uh, we'll see what dates work for them, what dates, what dates work for the council. And we'll try to get all of our collective minds together and, uh, formulate a plan for going forward.
The deal, that sounds like a great plan, Mr. Lynn, thank you.
Very good. Uh, anybody have any more questions?
Before we move on, um, the one question that I had is, and it's, it's more or less about the meeting. So if we're gonna do our budget workshop on the twentieth, could we possibly do a meeting on the twentieth with 4B maybe starting at five thirty? And then convene into the budget workshop after that, since we're already gonna be meeting together?
Um, that would be up to the 4B if they wanna meet with the council, if they can meet with you guys at five thirty on that day. I certainly will ask them that.
Okay, I, I think that would be a great start since we're already gonna be planning on meeting. Uh, maybe meet with them at five thirty, just kinda like we did today. Um, and do a thirty minute or whatever it takes workshop and just convene into our special meeting. We might be able to kill two birds with one stone, is all I'm saying.
I'm gonna do that, that would be good. I, I definitely will ask them.
If you can just let us know please, you can, Mr. Lynn, because I have to adjust my time at work to make sure that I'm there at five thirty. So if you just, as soon as you know something, please let me know or let us know so I can adjust my time.
I will, counselor, most definitely.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, moving on, item number seven, consent agenda, city council minutes. Item A. Everybody have a chance to look at the minute? Any questions on the minute?
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, A and B.
Got a motion by? Who second it?
Cindy.
Cindy with the second? Any other questions? If there's no other questions, Amanda, please call roll.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Owen Bier?
Motion passed. Item number eight, consideration of possible action in regard to directing and authorizing the mayor pro tem to sign all outstanding unsigned city-related documents. Is there a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion, we consider agenda item number eight.
I'll second that.
Say my last name?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Discussion, Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir. Counselor, okay, so, um, oh, it is true and correct that all ordinances and resolutions go into effect five days after the council adopts them, whether they're signed or unsigned. Uh, UNICOD, uh, prefers them to be signed for, um, purposes of adding validity when people pull them up. Uh, in addition to that, I'm looking at a list of documents that includes ordinances and resolutions, uh, but that also includes things like the ACOG agreement, uh, an LOA between, uh, the airport and, uh, uh, air education training command centers, uh, a failure to appear contract and tons of city council-approved minutes that go all the way back to January that require signature. Uh, and so what we're doing is we're just, uh, bringing this before council, uh, since the mayor has not signed them for whatever reason, uh, the reason doesn't matter. Uh, they're just unsigned, they need signed. And we're asking, uh, council just to, uh, authorize and direct the mayor pro tem to clean up all these documents and go ahead and sign them, uh, so that we can move forward with, uh, everything cleaned up.
Um, Mr. Lynn, it sounds like everything on this item is pretty self-explanatory. Um, would this be all current documents or any outstanding documents out in, and in the future?
Well, I guess given recent events-
Mr. Lynn?
Um, and things that I've- I'm sorry, counselor, go ahead.
I'm so sorry, I got disconnected, I just wanted to make sure that I got back on. Go ahead, I'm just-
Okay. Um, counselor, I, I really, I really err on the side of caution to, uh, be preemptive and say future documents and, as well, because, um, mayor may get the feeling better, he may show up at city hall, he, he may contact the city secretary, say, hey, what you got for me to sign? You know, he, he may, he may fulfill that part of his, his duties, uh, in the, in co- coming months. And I would just feel better if we just, uh, uh, go and have the mayor pro tem clean up all the documents and maybe the documents that you guys adopt tonight as well. Um, but just leave future documents to be future documents and if we need to, we can always ask again. I mean, um, while the mayor did resign, I mean, he did, he didn't resign, I misspoke. While, while he did withdraw, he did not resign, so he's still our mayor. So he may get the feeling better next month and, uh, may be able to sign documents then, I don't know. So, he may get the feeling better next month and, uh, may be able to sign documents then. I don't know. But right now, we just need to clean all this up.
Okay, well then, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve agenda item number eight to include all outstanding items, including any items that need to be approved or signed for tonight, I'm sorry.
And I'll second that.
Got a motion from Justin, seconded by Leslie? Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call Row.
Counselor Brianna?
Can you skip me, please, at this moment? Can you come back?
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Sine?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Counselor Brianna?
I'll have to abstain my vote.
Just pass.
Okay. Motion passed. Item number nine. Consideration and possible action in regard to the selection of an engineer for the 2020 downtown revitalization program. Mo- motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion. We consider agenda, fine.
Motion by Justin?
I'll second that.
Saying we're in any discussion. Do we have a presentation?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, this item is driven by the CDBG grant and the requirements, uh, that they set forth. Uh, we put out for RF, uh, Q for engineering firms. We had, uh, about seven respondents. Um, with the CDBG, they have a standard form that you go by to score people with. And typically, the award would go to the organization that scored the highest, uh, on that, uh, scoring card. Um, so we scored, uh, all seven of them, and I believe you all have that spreadsheet in front of you.
Where is that spreadsheet, Amanda?
It would be right after the, the sheet that says it's item number nine. It should be the, the sheet right after.
It's on page twenty-six, Leslie. Page twenty-six, uh, two oh seven. In my packet. We had two that scored a hundred.
Come on, tablet!
We had two also that scored ninety-five, right behind them.
Justin.
Yes.
Justin. Can you, can, on our tablet, how do you turn the, the sheet to be horizontal?
You can't. It just, it just keeps moving.
What you'll need to do is you, you can't turn the document, but you can prevent your, your screen from sliding. So, if you- Hold on, let me figure out the holder. Okay, if you swipe up, like swipe up on your tab, like where the little, uh, home button is, and it'll say, it'll say like airplane mirroring. Above that, you'll see a lock, and it ha- will have like a right circle turning right. If you hit that and then turn it side, it won't rotate.
Okay, let me see if I can figure this out real quick.
Well, you'll, you'll swipe up. When you swipe up, you'll see a little arrow pointing up. You'll click that arrow. Then you click that arrow up, then above airplane, airplane, you'll see one, two, three, four, five, six. You'll see six circles-
Tell me about the blue arrow? I can't get it to do nothing.
So, when you, when you put your finger where your home button and swipe up, and then a little, yeah, like blue arrow box will pop up. Click that. And it will, and, and click that and push up, and then a bottom menu will pop up. And then above the button that says airplane mirroring, there'll be six circles. The furthest right circle has a lock, um, with a right arrow going clockwise. You'll click that, it'll turn red, and that prevents your screen from rotating.
Got it. Thank you.
I can't get it to work, but-
It's okay, Leslie.
I've tried and, I've tried and tried, but I, I, I'm reading it upside down right now, so. Why I hate these tablets.
Leslie, I can teach you if you want me to.
Next time, next time we meet together, I'm gonna have you teach me.
I will, I will.
Thanks, Justin.
Yes, ma'am.
We had two that scored a hundred. How many do we have to pick? Just one?
Just one.
So, Mr., Mr. Lynn, um, I'm not familiar, or I've personally only worked with one of these engineering firms before, which is not the highest and best qualified, which is fine with me. Um, but the two that scored one hundred were M and S Engineering and Belco, I guess, Engineering. Has the city ever worked with them, or have you gotten any references from any neighboring cities or neighboring counties from them?
No, sir. I, I've never worked with either one of them, and I could not find anything, uh, where we as a municipality have ever worked with them before. Uh, I know the references were rather impeccable, um, as were the two that scored ninety-five. Um, so-
I wanna ask the question. On the process of doing the grant, everything is based on scores, right?
Yes, sir.
Would be prudent for us to get one of the hundred, one of the one hundred scorers instead of one of the ninety-five scorers, because they've already scored a hundred on-
Well, Leslie, the only one thing that's the scoring process is, yes, maybe one of them scored a ninety-five, but you, they, you might have a, uh, you might have knowledge of their work because it's local. I know sometimes we don't always go with the highest score with the county, just because maybe one of the engineering firms has done work with the county, and the county has seen their work, and they, they- Sometimes the county, yes, might, someone else might score a couple points higher, but if the county knows their work, has used them, has structured their work, sometimes that can beat that score sheet a little bit, but you should definitely use the score sheet as a reference. The only other question that I have is Cindy still from the line, Amanda?
I'm here.
Hi, Cindy. So, it's Justin again. Uh, my question is, so, M and S Engineering and Belco Engineering, are, are, I'm sure you probably worked with both of them. Do you, do you have a personal preference? 'Cause I know sometimes when we work with Langford at the county level, there'll be two high qualifying engineers, but Langford might have a better working relationship. Here, um, is there, is there a preference there with a work history with you? Oh, Cindy-
I can't hear anything, guys.
I wa- I, Cindy, I wasn't talking about Cindy Sines. I was talking about Cindy with Langford. Is Cindy with Langford still on?
I don't believe she is.
She's left. Okay. Sorry, Cindy Sines. I was, I was talking about Cindy from Langford. I just didn't know if she had a past working history with any of the higher linking engineering firms.
Hey, Justin, which one do you know of that you've worked, uh, that you've worked with, or the county has that you saw on here?
The only one the county's ever worked with, and it wasn't for a CDBG grant, is Intrepid. Um, but it's never been for grant work. It's only just been on county, uh, small county projects, which Intrepid scored a fifty-two. Uh, they're great engineers, but they might not specialize in what exactly we need them for. Um, maybe the- Mr. Lynn, what about M and S Engineering or Belco? Do you know, like, where they're located, like in proximity to Kennedy?
Uh, good question. I, uh, I don't have their documents right in front of me to tell you that, counselor. Uh, most of these engineering companies were, were either located in San Antonio, uh, or Corpus, uh, or within close proximity to us. Um, that wasn't the scope for this particular RFQ. Um, we, we were look, you know, we were going solely by the CDBG scorecard, so. Um, I can tell you this, uh, in my past history, I have worked with TRC. Um, and they did very good work, and I have worked with people who worked with McDonald's, and they have done excellent work. Um, so, while, counselor, you have experience with Intrepid, I have experience with the other two, uh, that scored ninety-fives.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And counselor Winn, uh, in a CDBG scoring card to get the grant, it, 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 it is, the score that the engineering firm had is not taken into consideration. That's all based upon, uh, criteria that the city itself has to meet. So, who we choose tonight, uh, will have no bearing on our score, whether or not we get the grant.
Okay, okay. That's good to know.
Yes, sir.
I still think we either need to choose one of the ninety-fives or one of the hundreds.
Uh, I know who I would like to see, but that's my personal preference.
We've had work done in the city by Six S Engineering too, have we not?
Um, I've heard Six S's name mentioned in the city before from prior, uh, grant applications. I don't know if they had, heard it anywhere.
Forty-three line going up to the cemetery back in that area.
Brandon, who did you say?
Six S Engineering.
Oh, okay.
They scored a ninety on this?
Yeah.
I don't know, guys. I still think I'd, I still think I'd wanna have one of the guys that scored a hundred.
I agree, Leslie. I'm leaning more towards M and S.
Can I ask the council a question?
Go ahead, Justin.
I, I, I do have Judy Langford's cell phone number, just because I work with Langford a lot. Would y'all like, and, uh, city attorney, let me know if this is not allowable, but can I conference call in Judy to see if she'll answer to ask her about her prior work history with these different engineering firms?
Um, you know, you could conference call her and see if she is comfortable speaking to that. Um, if, she was already on the call before, right?
Um, one of her employees was. She's the owner of the company.
So, she's the owner of the company. Um, she might, that might be more appropriate to do out of session. You know, not, if not as a conference call, to at least just ask her, you know, um, about her experience with the other, uh, companies out of session.
If he texts her to ask her- If he texts her to ask her to get on the call, would that be okay?
It, you know, I think that with the agenda item, it, it could be okay, you know, if she is okay and comfortable with doing that, that's okay. Yeah, go ahead and text her and see if she feels all right with that.
Okay, I will. Uh, ma- or, hold on, she just ta- I, 'cause I already did. Okay, so she responded to my text. Uh, do you want me to just ask her to join in?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. She can definitely join in.
Let me, just give me there a second so I can get the, um, number in.
While we're waiting on, uh, Ms. Langford, um, counselors, I was asked, uh, Belco is out of LeGrange. M and S is out of New Braunfels, just so you know. They're fairly close. So, New Braunfels anyway.
Two, two. Okay, I just texted her, and just so the council is aware, I asked her, um, if she's, you know, that Belco and S Engineering, uh, both scored the highest on our score sheet. And her response was, I like both, but I'm a little bit more partial to Belco. Both great guys and great to work with and very reasonable, but then I just sent her a text that she can join our council meeting if she isn't too busy. So, um, do we, should we maybe go to the next item or wait a few minutes, Brandon?
If the council, if the council doesn't mind waiting, we can wait, or if they would like to continue, we can always come back to title.
Okay.
We can always table this item for now and then come back to it at a later point in the meeting.
And do I have a motion to table this item?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table item number nine.
I'll take-
Alright, on favor?
Any other question? Amanda?
Go ahead.
She just responded back and said that she'll call me, so maybe let's just give her like a minute or so.
Okay. Amanda, watch the phone.
I am.
Mr. Lynn, while we're waiting- On the, uh, I know we talked about this a little while ago in your, in your report, but on that, uh, civic center, could you get with me sometime this week? I'd really like to visit with you about it.
Most definitely, counselor.
It's 'cause, you know, we, we, I had my hands in it. I really would like to stay involved with it. If you didn't visit with me, I'd love to sit here, what you got to, what you've come up with.
I have, I, I, I look forward to talking to you, counselor.
Thank you.
Someone just answered the call? Hello? Anyone there? Hello, who just answered the call? Hello? Hello, who just answered? Hello? Hello?
Hi, this is Judy.
Hi, Judy.
Hey, Judy, it's Justin. So, uh, thank you for joining on the, the call with us. So, we're going over our downtown revitalization, um, engineering applicant that, uh, submitted proposals for us. We had seven different engineers apply. We had M and S Engineering and Belco Engineering both scored a hundred. And then we had TRC engineers- And then we had TRC engineers and Ma- McDonald's engineers, uh, both scored ninety-five. Um, the Counsel have been discussing, you know, looking at the two that scored one hundreds. And we were just wanting, you know, we don't know much about them. We, you know, the city hasn't worked with those two engineers that both scored a hundred before. And so I'd mentioned to them sometimes, you know, when it comes down, it's a tiebreaker like this, sometimes it's good to get with the grant administrator that has working experience with the engineers, 'cause I'm sure you've worked with both. And we just didn't know if there was maybe a preference or at least some insight that you can give us since, uh, we're not familiar with them.
So in both cases, both engineering firms are good engineering firms. Um, uh, the, the folks that I did have worked the most with, with M and S Engineering, have gone out and on, into a different engineering firm together. Um, so I'm not as familiar with the M and S engineers that they have now. So that's just, I, I don't know that that would be a problem. It's just that the ones that I had worked with the most did, 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 um, did, uh, oh, to a different, they started a different engineering firm on their own. Belco Engineering is around for a very long time. I guess they're a little further away from, from Kennedy in that they are in LaGrange. But they are, uh, Bradley and Tim, who own Belco Engineering, have been doing this for quite some time and they do lots of grants with us. M and S, not quite as many, but they, I think you'd be happy with either one of them. I just have a longer term relationship with Belco and have a huge comfort level with them.
And, and would you say, one over the other, do they do more downtown revitalization programs? Or, um, like is, is there a preference in this specific grant? Or experience that you've worked with them with this specific grant?
Um, I've worked with both of them with this particular grant. I can't tell you that I, that there's one over the other one as far as their experience. Um, I think, I think Belco probably has a little bit more CDBG experience as a whole. Uh, but I think they both have done downtown revitalization, um, quite a bit. Uh, M and S Engineering is finishing up, uh, a downtown revitalization in Flores for the right, right now. Um, but, uh, I wouldn't say that I think one of them has more experience in downtown revitalization than the other. But I would say Belco probably has a little more experience in CDBG as a whole.
Leslie, did you wanna ha- or Brenda or Siti, or, and Brandon, did y'all wanna ask her any question?
What, I got one for her. Thanks, Justin. The, the quality of work that they do, have, uh, any of the cities they don't work for with this kind, with these kind of projects, have they come back? Uh, I would say pretty fair where there hasn't been any having to come back and fix stuff? Or do they ha- have they had problems in the past? What, what's your take on that?
No, as far as the engineering is concerned, they have not had any issues with their engineering itself that I know of. I, I have not experienced any.
Okay, and when they start a project, they follow through, they finish it off, they won't stop in, in the middle of a project and then leave the city in a bind having to find another company to come in, take over?
I have not had that experience with either one of them, no.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure, sure.
Thank you so much for joining our call. I really appreciate your input.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you guys. Um, good luck on making the decision and look forward to hearing what it is to- tomorrow then.
Yes, thank you, Judy. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
No problem. Okay. Talk to y'all later. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Um, does the Counsel have any other questions or a preference on engineering firms?
I think we could go with the, if I was gonna pick, I would.
I was gonna pick somebody. I'd go with the Belco.
I agree with, with Leslie. I would go with the Belco.
Then I'll make a motion that we award Agenda Item Number Nine to Belco Engineering.
And I'll take that.
I'm gonna make that motion. Thinking about Brenna. Any other discussion? Well, there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call roll.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Fein?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
On favor?
Motion passed. Moving on to Item Number Ten. Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to the Selection of an Engineer for the East Main Drainage Project. Much more discussion?
I'll make a motion we discuss Agenda Item Number Ten.
That's by Justin. Second that. Thinking by Leslie, discussion? Mr. Lynn, I got a few questions, just a few questions you might be able to answer or if these, if any engineers on the line that, uh, apply for this, can hear. They're from, uh, two constituents, right here. First question, is it?
Counselor, Counselor.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't mean, I don't mean to cut you off, but, um, Ms. Heinz has a resident's comment that they specifically asked to read at this point in the agenda. And I think we should let that comment be heard first.
Okay. Let's go ahead with the comment and I'll ask the questions afterwards. Not a problem. Go ahead, Amanda.
Thank you. It says, "We here at East Main have been quite patient with this entire planning and implementing process for our city streets. We've had our hopes up, been dashed, and more than once. The current push to finally have our drainage issue resolved has been ongoing since two thousand fifteen. Not to mention past generations making efforts to live in comfort without resolution. We understand that you may be doing all you can, at least that's what we hear, and we can only pray for. But five years is overdue time to have this completed. No excuse is good enough at this point. There have been other projects in Kennedy that have begun after the East Main project yet completed before. Just go back five years into your records to verify that. We are not sure why we keep losing engineers and our project managers, but ultimately it is up to you, the City of Kennedy, to help your taxpaying residents. We feel we have been let down and another generation may pass before you all can get this resolved. It is an injustice to us unseen by the blind eyes that do not live here or drive down here. But you all have knowledge of our ongoing nuisance of an issue and what you're doing with that knowledge has been evident. The evidence of our dire near has been presented. We have all said, we have said all we know and need. There is not much more we can say. Now we resort to whining like a child in hopes of getting our way. Our requests and cries go out to you all, from City Secretaries to Councilmen, Councilwomen, to Mayor Settman, and anyone listening to this letter. Because we know that anyone educated or not, with power and authority or none at all, anyone can bring change if they desire and care enough. We are tired, we've been patient, and refuse to accept finger pointing. Please, with urgent petitions, get this completed." And this is from Christie Mejia.
Thank you, Amanda. That was a great letter.
I would also like to add, I would like to add that two of the engineering firms that applied are on the line. I have Ma- McDonald and Manbo's Engineering. However, if y'all wanna ask some questions or if y'all wanna do one first or the other, just let me know and I can unmute them.
Okay, uh, we'll, I have some questions in a little bit for them. But I have a qu- some questions, um, that were sent for me to ask. And they're some pretty good questions. Why do we keep losing engineers on this pro- and project managers on this project? What will be a timeframe on selecting an engineer and beginning construction again? But we're gonna be selecting one tonight, but the timeline, when will we start again? Are we, if we select a project, will we, the city, be starting for scratch with these engineers? Once they're selected? And they are asking for concrete streets filled with curb system as proposed with that last engineer to prevent future maintenance being it's taken so long to get this original plan complete. Mr. Lynn, do you, do we happen to know why these engineers continue to leave that project? Or why they were having so much difficulty down there?
Well, I came in on the back end of this, like most everything. So, um, so since I have been in the City of Kennedy, I have only seen two engineers. Um, and so what I would say to the residents of East Main is both of the engineers that I had experience with on East Main, both left the organization for other organizations. So that is why you lost the last two. Um, they both left the company that we were employing.
Okay. And that, that's the only thing I know too, Brandon, is that, you know, somebody got a better job offer and they left.
Of course, yes.
I agree. I, I mean, yeah, jobs, people, yeah, start, start jobs and they get a better offer. Something better comes along, they, they will quit. That's understandable. Uh, but we, we gotta find firms that will, will stay on this project and get it completed. Still, that comment, that, that's what a lot of them are starting to feel down there. And they deserve to get the project they're needed. And, I mean, Mr., back in April, March, we're having those heavy rains. Mr. Lynn went out there. I met him up down there when I was there, we were driving around town seeing the drainage issues we have. And he saw exactly how, how it wasn't the way it was supposed to be. And we had a guy out there that was overseeing the project and had a brill- I would say a brilliant idea of how it was supposed to be done. And it, he ended up leaving for another firm. So we gotta find a firm, to me, that, that suits the need and finishes pro- this project prop- uh, property in a timely manner so these people can get what they deserve. They waited a long, long time. We had this discussion last month. And we as a city want what's best for them. And I think the time is now and we need to select the right firm tonight. That's how I feel about it. Honestly, Brandon, I think we all feel that way. We would like to select the right firm. And I think we thought we did that the first time and the second time. But we didn't get the results that we were trying to get.
Yes, sir.
So I have a question for the engineers that are on listening right now. Um, have you guys, uh, if you can chime in, Amanda? Have you guys, uh, looked at this project and seen what has happened and what needs to happen now?
Yes, this is Steve Sinovis with Ma- McDonald. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, now, Council members and, uh, man- City Manager Lynn and City Secretary Heinz, it's good to be back. I'm very passionate about the City of Kennedy. I was the one that, uh, Councilman Briones said left the other firm that was, had an excellent idea. I've been coordinating with the people down there on East Main ever since, uh, Mr. Lynn called in April. And I've been out there purposely going during thunderstorms to observe myself what had happened. Um, so I, my heart and soul is, is with the people of East Main. Part of me moving to Ma- McDonald was because, um, I have a better opportunity at a much bigger firm with a lot more power. They're an international firm with sixteen thousand employees. And so one of the things that was heartbreaking to leave my previous employer was that I was gonna lose my favorite client, City of Kennedy. Well, I am back and we are, um, on one of the two that have proposed. And I feel like I'm, I know more about that project now than anybody in the room. And, um, I would love to have an opportunity to continue my vision for the people of East Main so we can get this done. I definitely agree. They have been waiting too long. They, this needs resolution. We're ready to get rolling on this project right away to get this drainage mess fixed and then get the, the street done properly so that they have resolution for the next decade, the next generation. I designed a street in Arlington, Texas in nineteen eighty-five out of concrete. If you look at it today, it looks brand new. And that's my vision for East Main, get this mess finished and, and move forward. So I appreciate the opportunity to be back and to, and to work again with the citizens of Kennedy. Thank you. Uh, my, my superior, Territory Manager, is also on the line. His name is Mr. Joshua Carter. Do you have any questions for him? Thank you very much.
I do, so if, so if you, uh, you said you've already seen this project and, and you have a vision. Have you, uh, shared that with your staff there? And do they agree with what your, what your vision is? Do they agree with the idea that you have to get it done and completed?
Good question. I was asked to, uh, look at the pri- I was not involved in the project for the whole time until April of twenty twenty. I was asked to come in and look at it because I have forty years of drainage experience. And I had concerns and I expressed those concerns in a report that I did submit to, uh, City Manager Lynn. And that is, uh, available for y'all to see. The, the city has that report. And yes, I, uh, I think between, uh, weekly meetings with Mr. Lynn, I will try to explain my vision and how we were moving forward with the project.
Steve, this is Counselor Briones. Go ahead, Brenda. Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, so you feel pretty confident about getting this done pretty quickly?
I need to find out what happened to the contractor that's on the project. I've actually come out to Kennedy several times to drive the street and look at it. And I, I realized that they not, they did not finish the work that I was, uh, doing construction administration for in April and May. So I, I need to get up to speed on why they're not finishing their part. And then, uh, then yeah, definitely move forward with finishing the plans for the, the final design of the street and the drainage.
Okay. Go ahead, Brandon.
Okay, not a problem. Uh, Steve, this is Counselor Briones. Uh, um, just wanna let you know that when the people down there found out that you had left, I had a few constituents that were kind of worried where they were gonna go from there. And they said that you were in constant contact with them. If they had any questions, they could always go down there and talk to you. Do the, the vision that you had, is it? I'm sorry, say again? Oh, the vision that you had, that you told them, is what they wanted to hear. It's just now with this firm, it's like Brenda said, do they, are they up to, are they up to date to know what you want? Is there, other than what you just told us, is there any bumps that your firm that you're with now would have to face and compete in this project to the way that you wanted it to be? And is the cost still gonna be the same as it was with the other company?
Um, there are several issues that I have concerns about that need to be addressed that were not addressed in the, uh, the ongoing project. So those aren't bumps, but those need to be addressed. Uh, some of those include, uh, drainage, from the drainage area map, it was not considered in the, in the calculations. Um, a warehouse to the south that extended their impermeable area and got rid of a natural detention pond and put a pipe underneath their fence into Morning Street. Um, there's, uh, a, a property to the east that had an oil tank yard with a road that was built out of polichy that funneled water toward East Main. There was a pipe that was installed, uh, higher in elevation than originally designed because they ran into a conflict with what they thought was an active gas main. It turned out to be abandoned, so now that pipe is sticking up out of the ground. And there was a pipe that was punched into Nichols Creek without a permit. And then they had to delay to get a couple, uh, months to get a permit for that. But there's no check valve on that. So anything that comes in Nichols Creek that enters that pipe could possibly back up into that system. Numerous great inlets on the street that are not efficient. They're not, there are actually some that are higher than this street, the water can't even get into them. Several cr- uh, Several cul- uh, culverts that were installed like a rural highway with a large depression and a hole in people's yards. Again, that were very ineffective in getting water into the pipe. And so, my vision is to have standard curb and gutter inlets, get the water off the street. Um, there's, there's two streets, uh, Morning and Waverly, that are a constant maintenance headache for the city. They're bringing in rock every time it rains. There's water constantly there. The original design was a, uh, roadside ditch, very flat and very high water table after rain. So, as far as costs, it's gonna cost more initially to put in a concrete street, yes. But if you look at your costs over the next thirty or forty years, if you've got an asphalt street section with water close to the subgrade, you're constantly gonna be having potholes and unraveling of the asphalt because the water is ponding on the street. And so, my vision is that concrete is the way to go for the, the cost benefit over the long term. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Steve, this is Councilor Sines. I have a question.
Ma'am.
I'm reading your proposals. I've actually read all of them and I'm looking at the observations. Are those concerns that you declared, are they listed on these observations? Because it seems like you're very, and I know you are very familiar with this project.
Yes, um, that proposal, you know, because of the limited amount of pages in a proposal, it's, it's the concerns in general. Uh, the report that I, that I provided to City Manager Lynn is a lot more elaborate in, in those concerns on a very detailed basis with photographs.
Okay, okay. So, he has that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, I, I was very impressed with the observations and your project vision for this project. Um, one of the things that I, I would stress is to always continue the dialogue with the residents because this is their project as well. Um, and I know you, you know, they've had dialogue with you and I would just wanna stress that that should really continue.
Absolutely. Um, that is a passion of mine as a civil engineer to help people. And as a benefit, on a drainage engineer, a lot of times we have to hear directly from the people that have been there about what is going on, what happened. I've had some, there was a Facebook video that was taken in twenty seventeen that was very helpful. I could see what was happening on a, on a neighborhood basis. And yes, talking to the individuals and them describing what they see, it's very helpful and I will definitely continue to do that. Yes, ma'am.
All right. That's all I have. Are you still confident with the seven month delivery schedule, give or take, you know?
I'm, I'm confident we can finish the design and get it on, out to bid. And then we're just gonna have to get a really good contractor and really stay on them to get, to expedite the construction. Um, it, it can be done, but we really need to be aggressive and it, the people on that street deserve that, you know? They deserve for this thing to be aggressively finished.
They absolutely do and I agree a hundred percent.
It'll wait a long time, very long time.
Are there any other questions I can answer while I'm on the line?
What was the, what was the name of the company that you're with now?
I'm with Mott McDonald, sir.
So, Steve, if we-
One other thing, oh, go ahead.
Okay, Steve, if we- Go ahead.
One other thing I can, yeah, one other thing I wanna mention about a concrete street. It's, so the design as it stands right now is a crowned asphalt street with a side ditch and a side pipe. So, the water rolls off the crown and onto the sides, which pushes it over into the ditch. And the, the design, I believe, was done for a ten year storm. Unfortunately, a bigger event is going to run out of those ditches. Where does it go? Typically, you would design an emergency overflow outlet pass so that that water doesn't go across private property. And that's a challenging area because it's very flat. A lot of the houses are, you know, very low to the, the ground. So, the, the curb and gutter street idea, it acts like a channel and you can get the water into the concrete street instead of pushing it out into properties and then move it to a, a channel either down Waverly or, um, in an easement at the end of East Maine to allow those bigger events to, to capture it and flow without getting into private property. So, that's another advantage of a concrete street with curb and gutter is it acts like a channel for bigger events.
May I ask Mr. Sinovitz a question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Sinovitz, um, that, that sounds really, um, but how, how do you keep the water in, say, a thirty or forty year storm in a system that's designed for a ten or fifteen year storm from coming out of the ground? What is it that you have designed and came up with that was really awesome? Could you tell the council about that, please?
Well, I mean, a lot of people don't realize it, but storm drain systems, pipes and streets are designed as a, to, to work together. And a lot of people say, oh, my street is flooding when they see water that's ponding in the, in the roadway. But it's actually designed to do that. Depending on the road, if you have an arterial road, you'll, you'll be allowed to maybe limit the ponding to one lane on the outside. Residential streets typically will be allowed to have the ponding all the way up to the right of way line as long as they don't exceed the, uh, you know, go into private property and then possibly cause damage to, to residences. And so, you design a pipe for a certain storm, say a ten year storm, and it's carrying a certain amount of flow. And then it, it will come out of the pipe eventually, but it'll, it'll then be captured in the street above and you can run the, the remaining water of the bigger event down through that street as a channel with, with concrete, uh, concrete curb and gutter. Um, they, that particular, um, outlet, they have a thirty inch, it's HDPE corrugated pipe that kind of acts as an outfall. And unfortunately, that's a ten year storm, but there's nowhere for anything bigger to go. Uh, because there's no, there's no outlet designed, emergency outlet. So, the water is going to come out of that pipe and it's gonna flow north underneath the houses to the north to get over to Escondido Creek. And that's just something I'm not comfortable with as an engineer. I think that needs to be resolved. Um, you could do it with a box culvert underground, why, a wider, shallower, but it, it can handle more capacity. Or even a, um, a, a rectangular channel of some sort to, uh, allow that extra water for the bigger events to be safely conveyed away from private property.
It sounds like you have a, uh, you have a lot of thought into this project. Um,
Yes, ma'am. A lot of thought and a lot of, a lot of passion too. Because I, because when you talk to the people down there, your heart breaks for them and you get a part of that and you wanna do the design well so that they'll, their, uh, their system will work for them.
And if you're, see, if you're awa- Councilor Breonis again, if you're awarded, if your co- if your firm is awarded the, uh, timeline, everything you'll see is true. If there's any reason something might change, you will, you'll notify the residents down there, correct? Let them know about it as well? Like you have been down there on East Maine?
Yeah, uh, so Ms. Ms. Mahia is kind of the spokesperson for the street. And I've, I've spoken with her at, at length and I've actually, we've exchanged phone numbers and I will text or call her with updates from time to time as things change. So, yes, I'll continue to do that. Um, one thing that I do wanna impress on the city is that you paid for the existing design and the existing survey and existing notes and all that. And so, it's imperative that the city demand that that information be provided to the city so that if, if there is a, a change of, of, of the baton, if you will, of passing the baton, that the next engineering firm can continue with the information that was already paid for and not have to start from scratch. You, you deserve that. You've paid for it, so.
Good point.
That'll help expedite the project, because there is data available from the previous design.
Mr. Lynn, could you do that, get that, so we can have that for whoever we do decide to use?
It would be my pleasure.
Thank you kindly.
So, Brandon, how do you, where, where do you lean towards? How are you feeling? What are you thinking?
Well, from the resident's field toward, I, I'm gonna be, uh, gonna let you know.
Straight.
Completely on it, yeah. Yes, when Steve left and I found out he was leaving, I was, I could, I was in shock, actually. That I let the residents know that down there on East Maine that he was leaving and they were like, it's another delay. He was, he had good communication with, with Steve Mahia, of course, and other people down there. They would ask him questions. He had an open, I would say, as he's out there, an open door policy. They could ask him what they wanted. He would answer them by, uh, question by question and they would get back to me. So, I talked to some of the people down there on East Maine as well and say, we've got a great guy. We've got a guy who knows what he's doing. He's gonna do this project. He's gonna foresee it. And when he left, I could tell it was devastating to a lot of them down there. And knowing that he's back and he's got that vision, if we were to select him, I know those residents down on East Maine would be over the moon about it because they got the guy that was originally there and left and now he's back to see it finished. And they would have a lot of confidence and a lot of trust in him rather than risking having to get another firm and starting from scratch and not knowing exactly what's gonna happen. But that's, that's my take and how I feel. So, that where we go tonight is, that's totally up a council decision.
Do you feel confident enough to make a motion?
This was the, this was the guy that you had said previously that you really wanted to have there. So, now we have the opportunity to give you what you're asking for. I, I think you should make the motion, uh, for your district and for the guy you feel that can get the job done.
And that, that's what I was leaning towards, Brandon. If this is what you feel like is best for your district, then take the motion and I will second it.
I agree with both of you. Yeah.
I think we'll all second it.
Mr. Lynn, being that I am in the meeting site, can I make this motion?
Uh, you can make the motion, sir, because as a councilman, even though you're running the meeting, you retain all council rights, including to make motions and votes.
That's right. Okay, just to make you sure. Well then, do we have any more questions? If not, I will make the motion to consider and taking action and hiring Mott McDonald as the engineer to continue the East Maine drainage project.
I'll second that. Oh, Justin forgot.
It's okay. We're all in agreement. That's great. These people in East Maine, they're gonna, they're gonna be happy again with, when they know Steve's back down there. So, can I have a roll call, please, Amanda?
Sure. Councilor Breonis?
Yeah.
Lynn?
Hello?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Kano?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
motion passed. Thank you for the opportunity. I will not let you down. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eleven, consideration and possible action in regard to authorizing a construction contract for Building B at the Larry Keating Youth Sports Complex.
I'll actually go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Lynn, if you think this is correct, to table this item and, this item until the council has the opportunity for B.
I need to table eleven and twelve. Should we do it as a combo? Should we do it as a combo or do we have to do it individually?
We have to do them individually.
Okay. I got a motion, but-
And I'll second that motion for, for what Justin said, for number eleven.
Seconded by Brenda. Any more, any discussion?
No more discussion. Amanda, please call Row.
Amanda, real quick. Hold on, Amanda. The only question I have for Lynn is before we move forward, um, are these bids still going to be good by, like, how long are these bids?
Hello?
Somebody there?
Saying hello?
I muted. Uh, it was, but I, I, it was a new caller that just came inside, muted him.
Okay, okay. Go ahead. The, the question was, yes, the question was, I just wanna make sure that these bids are still gonna be good. If we have our meeting on the twentieth, are we gonna have to rebid all of this? Like, that's just the only question that I have.
Yes, we will have to rebid it out.
Okay, um, I still stand with my motion because I, I think we still, we talk with four B and look at our options. But I, I was just curious, so anybody listening to this, um, council meeting needs to know that, yes, we'll bid it out. But for the future of the sports complex, after looking at our budget being over budget, um, I wanna make this motion just to be cautious, uh, going forward with any future projects until we ain't gonna get the budget back under control. But like I said, I'll, I will still make the motion to table agenda items for eleven.
And I'll still second that for you.
Amanda, there's no other discussion. Please call Row.
Councilor Breonis?
Yeah.
Councilor Lynn?
Yeah.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Kano?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Moving on to item number twelve, consider action, consideration and possible action, I'm sorry, in regard to authorizing a construction contract for Building C at the Larry Keating Youth Sports Complex.
And I'll make the same motion.
And I'll make a motion that we, thank you.
Go ahead, Leslie.
A motion that we table item twelve, um, till we have an opportunity to meet with four B.
And a second, to second it?
I did, Brenda.
Brenda? Seconded by Brenda?
Yeah, same time.
Any more discussion?
I did.
No others? Questions? Amanda, please call Row.
Councilor Breonis?
Yeah.
Councilor Lynn?
Yeah.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Kano?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Cut out. Okay, good. I lost y'all, I'm sorry. Consideration and possible action, item number thirteen, consideration and possible action in regard to the authorization to advertise for bids for the paving of Pullen Street. Ever presentation? Motion seconded by Leslie?
Yes.
Discussion. Mr. Lynn, you got a presentation?
Thanks, sir. The councils, we discussed earlier, uh, Pullen Street, uh, is the only-
Hello, can I let you speak?
I'm sorry?
Yes, I, I never got an opportunity to speak. I've been ca- I've, I've, I've been calling several times and trying to ta- talk regarding the engineering project.
Uh, the council's already moved on from that.
Yeah, but I never got an opportunity to speak. I was on the line on hold the whole time. I, I listened to the whole thing and I never got unmuted to, to make my, my presentation.
Yes, sir. Are you with Mendez Engineering?
Yes. I've been on the call since six o'clock, so I was here the whole time.
Yes, yes, sir. Um, you know, we, we did go out for proposals for different engineering firms. Uh, this is in, uh, Councilman Bionis's district for East Main. Um, I think with his working history, um, with, uh, the, in Steve with Mott McDonald, I think he felt a little bit more inclined that he knew the project. And we do appreciate you for submitting a proposal, but, um, the council ended up deciding going with the recommendation from Councilor Bionis, um, especially with the past experience with continuing, that, uh, that that was probably the right engineering firm for the project.
Uh, yeah, but you still didn't do it fairly. You know, this is a fair process and I never got the opportunity to talk about our firm. We were just as qualified. We're much closer and as a smaller firm, we're gonna be way less expensive. So I don't understand why we, I don't mind losing, but not having the opportunity changes everything.
Uh, yes, sir. We did get your proposals. They were in our, I think everybody on the council did get to review it.
We saw your proposal.
Yes, sir.
No, I know. And, and then you asked, you asked for an opportunity to speak and he happened to go first and I didn't interrupt him, but I never got to speak on our behalf of our firm. So if you were to select him, it, it's a valid reason, I'm, but I'm disputing the fact that I never got an opportunity to, to talk about our firm.
Uh, yes, sir. I, I get that. Your proposal was submitted and the council reviewed your proposal as well, as well as the other engineering firms. Um, city attorney, did we violate anything, um, only speaking with Mott McDonald? Amanda, is she still on the line?
Yes. So you guys did not, you know, um, violate anything in making that choice to go with the other firm? However, if, you know, you would like to have the other presentation and consider that fair, that is a call that you could make now.
And once again, I'll refer this back to Brandon because this is his district and I feel like this is a discipline that the council needs to reflect and listen to him on, uh, because this is the district and ongoing project. So Brandon, um.
Mr. Lynn, can we go back and listen to it once we already selected it?
Um, the, the city attorney has already weighed in, counselor, and said that if the council so desires to, to listen to Mr. Menendez, you can do so, uh, the choices of the councils as to whether or not to listen to his pitch or to just move on from it. So, you know, it, it, it's council's decision. And, and the council is giving you that opportunity, Brandon.
How would y'all feel hearing his proposal? Is that gonna be okay?
Giving you that opportunity. We're giving you that opportunity, Brandon. You get to make that decision.
These are, the way I feel about.
Go ahead.
No, what I was, I, for your constituents, and this is a big project in your district. So if you would like to go back or want to, on McDonald, either way is fine with me because today your constituents that we're looking for.
Either, either way is fine with me.
It would be fair to hear him out. So, oh, how do, how do we go backwards on listening to him, to his proposal?
We can, we can just, we can just set aside item thirteen for now, uh, to, to listen to Mr. Men- Mendez. And when he's down, we can move right back into item thirteen.
Okay.
Hello, Mendez?
Go ahead, Mr. Linda.
Hello? Is he still there?
He still shows to be on the line.
Can you hear me? Let me step away. For some reason, you're not hearing me on the regular phone. Um, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, I wanted to talk to you regarding our firm's capability. As we are much closer located than, than the other firm, but we also have a lot of experience when it comes to drainage. Um, we've done drainage projects all over the central Texas to include the city of San Antonio where we wrote the manual for the city of San Antonio. So our understanding of drain, drainage is very, very high. Uh, one of the concerns that I've heard you say is that you've had to go through the struggle of having engineers leave. But me, as the owner, I, I'm never gonna leave because I'm the owner of the company, so you'll never have to worry about engineers switching in and out and, and not understanding your city in itself. Um, I have highly qualified engineers within the company, which includes Roy Akiona, who has forty-two years of experience in central Texas. So Mendez Engineering does a lot of drainage project, not only in the city of San Antonio, but the surrounding areas, which include, you know, Spring Branch, we even do project in Curville, Dallas. But we do concentrate in the San Antonio area as that's the area that we tend to do the most work with. Um, when it comes to smaller cities that we work with, we work with the city of Congress and this, and the city of, um, Sandy Oaks, which is a lot smaller than you, but we, we pretty much do all the ranges of, of projects within the city of, uh, within the state of Texas. Um, one of the biggest advantages you have with me is that we take drainage so seriously that even our auto cat technicians are, are certified floodplain managers. So you have several levels of people that have expertise when it deals with drainage. From the cat technician to the engineer that do the drawing, to the, to the, the registered engineer that's actually gonna sign and seal their documents. Uh, additionally, when it comes to going to site visits, you're never gonna run into seeing a very junior engineer on site. You'll always see them accompanied by a senior engineer because that's how we, we take pride in training them with understanding all the aspects of drainage that are involved, from small slopes to potential conflicts to even utility conflicts that could interrupt the design that we propose. Um, the big, and I, the big advantage that you have with the other firm is that the other engineer has extensive experience within the area. And I'm disputing that. That's, that's a great asset to have in that capability. But I could tell you that we can easily spin up with a report that's gonna be procured because we would have asked for the same thing. We did do a preliminary analysis of the site before we even went on the RFQ because we wanted to see if there was even possible to help the, the city out. And even though you, we, we took a calculation that we know that that street that you're on is point three slope, so it's really, really slight. But after you've done the whole site and looking at, at the floodplain and the five hundred flood year floodplain aren't, aren't really close, but they're pretty close. But we understand all the drainage issues that you're gonna run into and how we can help you implement a solid plan to, to help the city. And again, as a small firm, we don't have a, a lot of levels of bureaucracy and, and that are involved in producing a fair fee for the city to work with. And one thing I can only say, because we've always considered ourselves subject matter experts, we make sure that the, all projects are done till they're complete. We're never gonna walk away from anything. And if we see something that, that we should have seen, we're not gonna come back and try to invoice anything amused from something that you expect from day one. Because again, we, we consider ourselves subject matter experts when it comes to drainage. So there should never be something that we missed or didn't anticipate or understand when we deal with drainage. Um, we have a lot of experience to also do in street and pavement design. So we, we complement our drainage designs with understanding the full understanding of the, the street design required to meet projects. Even your site, which is a very slight, um, very, very slight slope, I mean, point three is, is, uh, it almost has to be concrete. At that such small, um, slope, you, you need to have somebody that conveys home water off the street fairly quickly. And that's probably the best way to do it. Um, I can answer any questions if anybody has any from this point.
So you said you did walk out and take a look at what, what the issue we have out there?
Yes, um, Roy was our main drainage engineer here. He actually went out there and did, uh, basically he went through the, got a topographic, uh, LiDAR information from your, that street. And that's what determined how small the slope was. That's when we realized that it was only point three. Uh, we saw downstream of your area that the floodplain does start and the five hundred year floodplain starts. Um, we'd have to look at the other drainage engineers' calculations, but we're not, we're not, we highly doubt that they actually incorporate the new Atlas fourteen modeling that's being done now for the entire state. Um, there's a high likelihood that, that it's not gonna meet that requirement. Uh, but one thing we do do, we do have the capability to provide models to give you non-engineers and your citizens a, uh, a view of what the model will look like in paper or, or a report so they can see what to expect when certain rain events come. And that way you can accurately tell them ahead of time, this is what you can anticipate at this rain event or that rain event. And they could see it on paper so they could see what it would look like and how much water and where we expect it to go. That way they're, they're not surprised or if they see that, if they need to do some sort of mitigation on their private property to avoid something.
May I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Menendez, you said you used LiDAR to, to assess your data, was that correct?
Yeah, it was pulled up, uh, was that the county?
In, in recite?
Okay.
So, so did you, so have you come out during one of our rainstorms and actually seen, uh, what, you know, how the drainage is actually working and what really needs to be done?
No, we, we, we haven't done that to, to your city at all. We, we've only done it based on models. When we saw the RFQ, we knew we were, we could do drainage. So that's what we said, hey, let's look at it. So we evaluated the, the property base, our LiDAR data, and that actually being on site. Uh, had we seen the advertisement come out earlier, we probably would have, but we got it so late that we didn't actually take, we, we weren't actually able to go on site to develop an actual visual site of what happened. And then to be lucky for it to rain, I mean, that made it even smaller chance to see, see anything happening.
Okay, so, so everything you're, you're basing everything on is on, uh, computer diagrams and statistical analysis that's generated from your LiDAR. You don't, you, your guys or your team has never come out and put eyes on.
Right, that, that is correct. The, the LiDAR data is more of, uh, is, is like a topographic photo of the ground. So it's not, it's, it's not, it's not the model itself. We put that data in our model to evaluate the stuff and stuff. So it's, but it's pretty good information. It's just not eyes on. Uh, but it does, it is a lot more active to develop models and give you a good active, uh, explanation of what is happening overall for everybody to see. Not just the, as an engineer, I'm able to go out and be able to identify some spots, but it's hard to convey it to, to your residents by just talking to them. It's, it's, they're better off when they get models and, and shows exactly what's, how much water is going to certain areas, what to expect with each rain event and have a good understanding of what to expect.
Okay. I was just wanting to make sure to, to understand that you were basing everything on modeling versus actual eyes on. I just needed to understand that. That's all.
And, and when we made our, we would do a final design, it wouldn't be based on just modeling. This is only done just modeling just because we were only doing, uh, a review for this RFQ. When we would actually do a project, we actually go on site.
Brandon, do you have any questions? Because this, I, I think everybody on the council is gonna stand behind you on what you feel is best for, um, district, your district. And so, um, if you can think of some questions, uh, if you have any questions, um, like, ask the rest, let us know.
The question, a question I do have for him is, what kind of relationship would you have with the residents down there? And with everything that's in place, how would you pick up what's already been installed and take it, and take it to the finish line?
Yep. For, for us, um, we, it's common for me and my senior engineers to go on site all the time and discuss questions. Uh, one of the projects that we have here at the city of San Antonio is redoing their sidewalks. And I completely agree. When you're walking the sides, you're wearing your vest. People tend to come towards you and we never dismiss them. We always take the time to talk to them because they do give you a lot of valuable information. They, they tend to have a clear memory of what happened to them and what year. So all that data is always taken, taken down and evaluated as part of our design because when you live there, you actually know what happens, when it happens, and, and we tend to learn a lot from that. So we definitely gonna continue that belief. It's just part of our standard practice to do that all the time and take notes and, and take video of what we see before and after so that everybody can have a, a documented record of what we saw because we're filming everything as we're walking the streets and showing so we can understand. And the way the design is complete, we do the same thing. We go back and, and film it again to make sure that you can see what changed and how it changed. Now, as I mentioned, we will always talk to the, the, the residents and anybody else that asks the questions. But we're confident that we can also pick up from the design that the previous engineer did. Because again, we're subject matter experts when it comes to drainage, so we'll be able to easily pick up what they did, how they did it. And then reverse engineer to make sure that they're doing the new Atlas fourteen requirements for the state of Texas. Now, I don't know when he finished the design, but it's highly likely that he didn't take that into consideration. But we, we will let you know ahead of time, no, but look, if he didn't take this evaluation, this, he didn't take that design criteria because it wasn't required at the time, but this is the difference between the two. And we, and we'd gladly show you the difference so that way you can make a, a decision how to proceed at that point.
Does any other council members have any question? Mr. Lynn, uh, I appreciate your presentation. I'm sorry you waited, uh, this long for the chance to speak. But right now, as we stand, I'm gonna have to stand with Mott McDonald. They already have a vision. They already have exactly, they've seen hands on, well, Steve's seen hands on to what's happened and these bad rain events that we had. And we had a numerous amount back in March and April down here. Uh, had it not been for those rain events, that project would have kept, continued going the wrong direction. And he's got a vision and knowing the fact that the people down there already have a good communication line between them, I'm gonna have to go ahead and stand behind, behind them so they can, they can continue and we can get this project done. That's how I feel.
Okay.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity, sir, for speaking. Thank you very much. Thank you. Amanda?
Item thirteen.
Okay, go on. All right. We're gonna go ahead, move on to item thirteen, paving of Pullen Street.
I'll make a, maybe consider agenda item number thirteen.
I'll second it. Discussion. Okay, Mr. Lynn?
Okay, thank you, council. Um, so as we've said before, um, if you're coming to Escondido Park and you're coming up one eighty-one towards Caron City to go to the park, your only way out is through Pullen Street. Um, so it, it's important that we, we get this bid out. Uh, Sarah is trying to still do their grand opening towards the end of September. So the sooner we get it bid out, the sooner we can accept the bid, sooner we can get the work started on it and hopefully get it done in time for their grand opening.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn, for putting this on the agenda. Um, I agree. We do need to get this out to bid. Hopefully we can get this out to bid, get the project completed, um, by the grand opening, which it has September twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth, something like.
I think September twenty-sixth, I believe.
It's one of the. Yes, yes. So this, this, this council is just, uh, a process in the motion. Doesn't mean tonight that we're approving, um, the streetway. Um, I do believe it's something we need to do. This is gonna be a highly trafficked, um, park. It's something great for our community and in Carons County. Um, so I'll just go ahead and make the motion that we go out for advertisement for the paving of Pullen Street. Um, so I'll just go ahead and make the motion that we go out for advertisement for the paving of Pullen Street.
And I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call roll.
Councilor Breonis?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. Item fourteen, consideration and possible action in regard to an interlocal agreement with the Kennedy Independent School District for a school resource officer.
I'll make a motion, we consider agenda item number fourteen.
And I'll second that.
Discussion. Mr. Lynn?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, Officer Fanning has been serving in that capacity. Uh, except for this summer, she's been working within the city and doing a very good job, uh, helping the other officers out around town. Um, however, I am going to, uh, let Chief Ash, uh, spearhead the rest of this, and she has more details of this was, uh, put in motion before my tenure. So Chief, if you're on the phone, floor is yours, sir.
Yes, I'm here. Uh, just basically all we're doing is the, uh, school has already approved it. We took last year's agreement and just moved it forward a, a year. The way the agreement's set up is it has to be re-approved every year. Um, so the school has, uh, approved it. They want to continue with the program. The school is going to continue with some sort of in, on campus schooling, and so they do want to have the SRO there. Um, so the school has approved it. We're just asking you to approve it as well.
Chief, and you, and they did benefit from having that police officer at the school.
The school is really, yeah, they really, I get a lot of really good positive feedback from the school on her, on. And Officer Fanning was a great, uh, hire for us. She does a wonderful job there and, and, uh, you see around the kids and, you know, the kids just really enjoy being around. I think the school is really enjoying having that program, and I think it's a, a good program for the city as well.
And, and just so anybody can, uh, to this from the community, Officer Fanning is paid seventy-five percent from, uh, Kennedy I C and then twenty-five percent from, um, the Kennedy Police Department. So we utilize her three months out of the year. Although with the pandemic, it was a little bit different, but this is funded only twenty-five percent from the taxpayers. And she is, um, not twenty-five percent, she serves the city, um, police department, patrolling, acting as a regular officer. Um, and from what I've heard from the school, they're very happy with her. Um, with that being said, unless there's other questions, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the interlocal agreement between the City of Kennedy and Kennedy I C.
I'll second that.
I got a motion by Justin, second by Brenda. I just got a quick question for Chief. Is he still there?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Thank you, yeah, Councilor Breonis.
The, uh, with the pandemic going on and everything and the way schools are going, how much, uh, training will she be receiving as she continues to work to the school? And if she does go to more training, will school, will it be the school paying for the, the training or will it be the police department?
Yes, so the way the agreement works, if the training is, uh, for school resource officers, uh, tr- for, you know, specifically for that function, the school pays for the training, we pay for training that is related to her license as a peace officer. If that makes sense. Um, most train, in, around the police world in general, uh, training is difficult, uh, now because of COVID. We're starting to see it pick back up, more in, more in, you know, training being done. Um, but yes, if that answers your question, if it's a school-related training and the school pays for it, if it's for her license, to maintain her license, then we pay for it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? If there's no other questions, Amanda, can you please call roll?
Councilor Breonis?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Conno, yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. Moving on to number fifteen.
Consideration and possible action in regard to a request for Jeffrey Lower Freeman, a plat of point two-one acres in the City of Kennedy, Karnes County, Texas, of the Carlos Martinez Grant Abstract Six, being a portion of that certain one hundred six point six-one acre tract described in conveyance from Karnes Kennedy Land Investment L P to Kennedy Land being L P of record in volume one-one-seven-five, page six-fifty-two, Official Public Records of Karnes County, Texas.
I'll make a motion, we consider agenda item number fifteen.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir. Uh, is, uh, Mr. Mead still with us?
Yes, sir, I am here.
Okay, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Um, it has been on my recommendation and on the Planning and Zoning Commission to go ahead and approve Mr. Freeman's request for plat. Mr. Freeman's been very patient with us. We've had a lot of setbacks and he's been waiting about four months for this so he can get it, that, so we can go ahead and get this wrapped up, so we can go ahead and purchase this plot of land.
Can you, okay, I'm looking over.
Do we have the abstracts for the plat?
Uh, they should have been in your package, yes, sir.
They're, they're in the, I'm sorry, they're in the packet and it shows the abstract, but then it also shows Los Colinas. Can you kind of explain the relation to that? Cause I'm not seeing any indication of where the land is or what exactly he's wanting to do.
Okay, he lives at the end of Cadena Loop, which is basically a cul-de-sac. What he is wanting to do is basically, he wants to, there is a hundred and six eight point six-one acre undeveloped property that sits right next to his, and he is wanting to purchase point two-one acres of it adjoining his property to have a bigger yard.
Oh, okay. Oh, I, I, I see it now, now that you said that. Um, okay.
Everything's been gone through. We're just waiting on approval so he can go ahead and sign his papers.
I'm just, I have a question, Joel. Mr., uh, Mr. Mead? Uh, I'm just, that was back then where we've got this going, I think it was two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, Los Colinas is supposed to be, where they're going to start building new houses, and they're supposed to be side by side. So if, I'm just saying, in future reference, if a neighbor wants to add on to his yard, you can buy the property next to him or behind him?
Um, that I would have to look into, but he is at the end of a cul-de-sac, end of the building area.
Okay. So Brandon, Los Colinas, what we're seeing on our iPad, that was phase one. I know, um, they're planning on building additional houses in there, um, but that, I, I'm willing to bet it's because he's buying land outside of phase one that he's probably meaning to do this.
Yes, that is correct. Undeveloped section of land, so he does have to get the approval, y'all, to be able to buy it.
Okay, so it's outside the phase one. That, that's, okay. I thought saying, for, for people that are inside, like, oh, I just want this property next, and I just go ahead and purchase it and bring it up like that. I know they were supposed to build lots, lots of homes. That was the original.
Apparently, I just heard from Mr. Freeman that, yes, there has already been two other people that have brought the property next to them, their house.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And so with the planning and zoning recommendation to approve this, I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item fifteen, um, for the replat.
I'll second that motion.
I already seconded.
Go ahead. First by Justin, Leslie. Any other questions? If there's no other questions, please call roll, Amanda.
Councilor Breonis? Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Joel.
Yes, sir, thank you, Joel.
Item sixteen, consideration and possible action on the calculated no new revenue tax rate of point two-six-two-five-seven-four cents. Voter approval rate, tax rate of point two-one-one-zero-nine-two cents. And the de minimis tax rate of point four-four-zero-zero-three for the ad valorem property tax rate for fiscal year twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one and scheduling public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, consider agenda item sixteen. I'll second it. Discussion. Mr. Lynn? Your presentation?
Thank you. Uh, so in twenty nineteen, the legislature changed all the terminology on us. Uh, it used to be effective rate and rollback rates. Uh, now it's, uh, no new revenue, voter approval, and de minimis. Um, there's some things that the council, I, I, I'm just going to talk because I don't know what y'all know. The, uh, no new revenue rate is the tax rate that it would take, uh, for us to maintain the revenue that we got this year, next year. Um, the voter, voter approval rate, the V A R, that is technically the number that we can approve without having a mandatory, uh, referendum on an election. And the, the de minimis tax rate is the, uh, maximum we can have, um, because one to thirty thousand. So the kind of the way this whole thing plays out is like this. Because we're a municipality and because we have less than thirty thousand residents, we as a municipality do not have a mandatory referendum that we have to be concerned with unless we go over the de minimis rate. So if we were to try to, uh, raise taxes over the de minimis rate, we would have to have it, uh, as a referendum at an election. Um, anything below the de minimis rate, we do not have to have a mandatory election because we are a municipality with less than thirty thousand people. Now, that doesn't mean it won't go to an election. It just means there's not a mandatory election. Um, the de minimis rate, uh, essentially is the voter, um, approval rate, uh, plus an amount that would get you to five hundred thousand in M and O revenue. Um, so currently, uh, we were at fourteen cents on our M and Os, and with our I N S, we were just, uh, under twenty-seven. Um, so, uh, that, that's where we were. So when we look at these, uh, tax rates, um, the, the, the one that you could get away with would be the voter approval rate, but that would, we would lose money if you did that. Um, if you did the no new revenue rate, uh, revenues would stay the same, and if you went with the de minimis rate, we certainly would be in a better position financially. Um, I will say this, the M and O, uh, I, I don't know what y'all know, so, uh, M and O is maintenance and operations, and this is the money, the M and O is, what we use to fund the city with. Uh, we pay our bills with it, our salaries with it. Uh, that M and O rate is what we pay our bills with. Um, the I N S rate is the interest and sinking rate. That is what we pay our debt with. So whatever debt we have, bonds, loans, things of that nature, uh, that's the rate we use to, to pay that down. So, um, the I N S does what it's supposed to, interest and sinking, is every year that rate should get lower as you pay debt down. Um, so these are some of the kind of things we talked about in the interviewing process, uh, whenever you all brought me in for an interview. Um, uh, I'm pretty sure I said it in the interview, uh, but I'll say it again for everybody's benefit. A municipality of our size, um, we need to be at an M and O rate of between forty-two and forty-seven cents on a hundred dollars. Okay, that is where we need to be. Uh, that dollar amount lets us operate, uh, very fiscally responsibly. Uh, currently, we're not there. We're about a third of that. So the City of Kennedy for years never raised its tax rate. And while residents would be like, yes, that's great, our tax rates have never gone up, that's a bad thing. That tax rates have never gone up. Because when tax rates don't go up, you don't have any money coming in to do the things you need to do. And as we get into next Thursday, uh, you all are going to see in the budget how this affects us. Um, one of the things I typically try to do, and I've mentioned this a couple of times, uh, to people, is usually I'll have a grassroots meeting with the residents of the city where they can come into City Hall and during budget time, we'll talk about the budget, we'll talk about the tax rate. Uh, I'll explain everything to them. They can ask me questions. Um, I'll give them a blank budget. I'll give them a fictitious amount of money, and I'll have them fill out a budget because I want them to see what it's like to fill out a city budget. Um, COVID nineteen has kind of kept us from doing that. Uh, I spoke to Ms. Heinz recently, and depending upon where council goes tonight with this line item, uh, sometime between tomorrow morning and Wednesday night next week, I am going to have a Facebook Live presentation whereby I put on a little workshop for the residents, uh, about, about city budgeting. Uh, and we will talk about taxes and the effect of taxes and, uh, why municipalities raise tax rates, why they raise water rates, things of that nature. I will show the residents of the City of Kennedy, um, why certain things are essential. Um, so I'm going to get in front of the residents in a week, uh, within the week. Uh, but tonight, what we're faced with, it, it's not an easy decision. It really isn't. Um, you're looking at these rates and the residents are looking at the rates and the residents are hoping that you don't raise taxes. Um, you guys are put in a position of, what do we do? Uh, I will tell you that the right thing to do is to do the right thing. And, uh, well, that seems like a something that's just circular. Uh, the reality to it is, we've got to make the hard decisions sometimes. So, um, I can sit here all day and tell you which rate I think we should go with and why, and I can justify it all day long with numbers. Uh, but at the end of the day, five of you are the ones that are going to hear it from the residents before I do. Um, I can get in front of the residents and explain everything to them. But that doesn't mean that they're going to be any more accepting of anything. So, um, I would say where we are today, the no new revenue rate is, is about where we are today. Um, the voter approval rate, yeah, go ahead, council, please.
Question. So you've, you've, I'm sure you've been working on the budget with, uh, Amanda and everything else. Can we make the no new revenue rate work with the budget that you're going to be proposing to the council?
Can we make the no new revenue rate work with the budget that you're gonna be proposing to the council?
Um okay, so let me say this to you, counselor. Um I can make any of it work. The thing is, it's gonna be a give and take. So the question is, how much give do you wanna give? What do you wanna give up? Um econo- the study of economics is all about what they call opportunity cost. Opportunity cost is what am I giving up to have this? So if we go with the no new revenue rate, what are we willing to give up? Are we willing to give up street repairs? Are we willing to give up water line repairs? And I'm not talking about emergencies. I'm talking about planned projects that we could do. Um what are we willing to give up to to stay at that rate? Um right now, I will tell you that the budget is already four million dollars cut from last year. I've already cut four million out of the budget. And we will go over that more in detail, why I did what I did. But some of it, um I mentioned to you guys in the interviewing process. I questioned you on it in the interviewing process, erased concerns. Uh and some of it, we've talked about tonight, what we don't wanna do, you guys were doing. So I've taken all that stuff and taken it off the table. Uh so we're already four million dollars light between the two, between the general fund and the water fund. What does that mean? Well, the city of Kennedy has traditionally taken money from the water and sewer fund and put it into the general fund to help pay the general fund bills. So you're making your water department pay for your general fund. Now, that's legal and a lot of municipalities do it. But you should be funding your general fund off of your M and O taxes. So that's where we are. So I can make any of these numbers work, uh counselor. To answer your question, I can make the new, I can make the N N R work. I can make the V A R work. I'd probably prefer the de minimis, but I can make them all work. I just, you know, whichever way you all wanna go with, as your city manager, tell me and I'll make it work.
So and and you kind of just answered my question, which is fine. I mean, I want your insight on this. But I was listening to you talk, and the de minimis rate is probably the rate that you would recommend to council. Um I personally, I personally, for the citizens of Kennedy, I I would love great things for the citizen. You know, eventually, tax rates probably should go up. But with the economic situation that the entire country is in right now, I'm just not sure that that is the right thing for Kennedy. And I I do understand priorities and talking about projects and not being able to do certain things for the citizens of Kennedy. But we are a low to moderate um income community. So when we raise these tax rates up to the proposed de minis- de minimis rate, it's going to inflict a lot of hurt on them. And that's just my personal feeling, especially in a time of crisis. Uh me personally, I think the no new revenue rate would probably be appropriate for this year. If you just focus on priority projects, um it's still working on the infrastructure, but be a little bit less proactive this year because of, you know, the past, you know, three, four months, five months that we've been through with COVID nineteen. And just because we don't know where things are going. Although I am always for, you know, big projects and building the city of everything else, I I just know the constituents that we have and and that is gonna hurt them. And not for me because I, you know, I'm I'm going into this, almost finished with my term, not gonna be able to run again. But because I truly do care about, you know, not the constituents of District Four, but the entire city. And I just know the economics of the citizens here. And I would hate to push them out of the community that they grew up in, the community that they love, to go somewhere else where they can afford to live. And I don't get me wrong, this isn't gonna make or break someone. I just don't know if the de minimis tax rate at this current moment, at this current year, important time, is the right rate for us to go for this fiscal year. And I and I and I
and we don't.
Hey, I really. Go ahead.
I was gonna ask, we don't have a choice to go somewhere in between the no new, no new rate and the de minimis rate, do we?
Yes, sir. You can go, you can set the tax rate anywhere you want, up to the de minimis rate. And so once, once you, the 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 way it works now is, you remember the old rollback rate that they had? Um the rollback rate was the rate that triggered a mandatory election that if the voters voted, they could roll back the rate um to below that number. Well, the de minimis, the de minimis rate works the same way. If you go over the de minimis rate, that triggers an automatic uh referendum at the election. I mean, it's automatic. Um anywhere between the voter approval rate and the de minimis rate, the council can set the rate. Um but considering that we're under thirty thousand, and that's key, not every municipality in Texas gets a de minimis rate. Uh only the ones that are under thirty thousand in population. And that's because the legislature knew that uh the three and a half percent they were imposing on the larger municipalities wasn't enough for small municipalities to uh sustain operations. So uh the the caveat is that once you get above or get outside of that no new revenue rate, then it becomes, uh it it goes to the voters. They can either, okay, we'll take it and we understand, or they can say, you know what, no. Uh and a certain percentage of the voters can file a petition with council to put it on uh as a referendum for the election to move it back. So it it really is a risk um moving it out of one of those. But yes, sir, to answer your question more succinctly, we can go anywhere between the voter approval and the de minimis rate. You can set it wherever you want.
So we don't have to go all the way to that point four four, but we could go up somewhere between that point two one and somewhere between the point two four. Right now, we're at point two six. So if we went to point two eight or point two nine, it would help with where we're trying to get to for the city, but it wouldn't hurt as bad.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Okay. Yes, yes, you are correct.
Mr. Lynn, so what would that mean if we did it like a, I don't know, at point two eight, point two nine? What would that do for the, you know, just an average citizen, taxpayer, correct? Can you break it down like that?
I, well, I ha- legally, I have to do that. Once we set the tax rate, then when we do the budget, what happens is, is I have to create a a cover sheet that says that the city of Kennedy uh is raising taxes and this is about how much the average taxpayer can expect their taxes to increase. Um and and I have to do that. So the the residents of the city of Kennedy will know that. I I will tell you all this much, okay? And and I'll make this commitment to the council and to the residents of the city of Kennedy. Um if you guys select any rate that is not the the V A R or the N N R, okay? So if you create a rate or go to de minimis, whatever, if it's not one of those other two, I will get in front of the city of Kennedy this week on a Facebook Live where they can ask me questions. And I will explain this as intricately as I can to all the residents of this town so that they understand exactly what's going on and how it will exactly impact them in the future. I will give you my word. I will do that before Saturday.
And the and the reason, guys, I had I had said that is because the last two years, we have not changed the tax rate. We didn't change it last year and we didn't change it the year before. And if we don't change it soon, we're not gonna have the money to fix the stuff that needs to be fixed because we're not generating enough revenue in taxes. And it's our own fault because we chose not to be proactive for the citizens. It hurts, but we are there because they need that proactivity.
And Leslie, I understand that one hundred percent. I just think because we're in a pandemic right now, do I think tax rates in the city of Kennedy are relatively low and need to increase? Absolutely. Will I agree that the water rates and sewer rates for the city of Kennedy needed to increase? Absolutely. But think about it this way, we are not, we are not charging late fees right now or disconnects on residents because of the pandemic. What I am saying is let's put it off one more year. And granted, I will not be here next year, but put it off one more year until the economy gets steady again and then impose a slow increase, a slow increase each year. Um because I know, I believe, I don't know this, I believe Mr. Lynn can manage the budget to make us still be successful, maybe not as proactive, but still be successful until we get through everything of COVID nineteen. That's what I am proposing.
I agree with you.
I I hear you. I just, I just, I just think we're, I just think we're putting too much value on COVID nineteen because next year, it may be some other, some other disease that we're saying, well, you know, let's wait again. And then we failed our taxpayers because they don't, they don't have the best that they could have had because we didn't make that, we didn't make that push for that little extra.
And I think it's
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with, I'm gonna go with the majority. But I just want to make sure it's out there that we are looking at trying to grow our community. And we're doing these things trying to grow our community. And then we say, well, we wanna grow the community, but let's not raise taxes. That's, that's not real.
Yeah.
If you guys don't wanna do it, that's, I understand.
I get what you're saying, Leslie. I do. I understand what you're saying. And I understand what Justin's saying. But I'm looking at it beside is because it's affected our, it's affected my family, and I don't know if it's affected your family, but people aren't working now because of COVID. Or having to stay home. And I just, so if we, if we do this right now, if we, if we move the tax rate and we raise it, I I just think we're gonna put a strain on our our citizens. I I really do. It's hard enough already. And then with this now with COVID and people having to stay home, and then maybe some of us aren't at home, but then we come down with COVID, we're home for fourteen days. And some people don't get paid for it, you know? And I just, I don't wanna put a strain on anybody because it's this COVID, so it's, you know, it, and I don't, and I get what you're saying. You don't wanna put such a big value on COVID. I get that point. But it's here and it's real. And you can't, we can't just say, you know.
It's like the, the flu is here and it's real. We had six hundred and fifty thousand people die nationwide from the flu in the last year. But, you know, I understand COVID and it's and it's and it's a big deal. But eventually, we're gonna have a vi- a vaccine. Eventually, it will be something that we talk about in the history books and we will move on to whatever the next crisis is. But
I get
we can't operate the city, we can't operate the city crisis, crisis to crisis. It's like, you know, it's, we're responsible for saving, so when this situation happens, we have enough to get by those fourteen days so that we can go back to work and keep going. I understand all that. But, you know, I just, I I just really want to put it out there that we have, we've not done anything on taxes uh the last two years I've been here.
Yeah.
And we're finna do it, this will be year three that we have not moved the tax rate at all. And, you know.
And Leslie, I think you're right. I think, you know, we've done slow implementation. So the council before us, uh Brandon was the only one still on there. They raised the water rates, okay? After we raised water rate, water rate, a few years later, we raised the sewer rates because it needed to be raised. I know the citizens don't like hearing that, but we have to get to fair market value. And you know, this year or next year would have been a great year to move the taxes up because we have to worry about the infrastructure. What I am saying though is, you know, I think COVID nineteen is a political battle beyond most things, but it is a real actual disease and people are dying from it. But mostly beyond that, it is affecting our economy so badly. So many people are losing their jobs. And you know, oil and gas, it's it's tanking because of COVID nineteen and how political everything is going. What I'm saying is let's just, my recommendation to the council would be, let's look at the no new revenue tax rate. I know we can't get better with a no new revenue tax rate, but we can maintain through the pandemic. We can get through this budget cycle. Then when the world gets back to that quote unquote somewhat new normal, then I would hope that the future council would look at that and say, you know what, maybe not the de minimis rate because that's such a huge jump to taxpayers. And we don't wanna push out to citizens that have been in this community for years and years and years. And granted, I'm a transplant to Kennedy. And I don't even wanna see the people, my neighbors or anybody else, you know, see a huge increase all in one year. But you're right, there needs to be an increase and the citizens do need to expect that in the future. My recommendation though would be, let's just, let's let's hold off one more year. We can maintain through the no new revenue tax rate. And then next year, when we come, well, when the future council comes to the board, think about a few cent increase and what that, and let, and and inform the citizens and let them know, you know, if we raise the tax for a few cents per evaluation, that we'll be able to give you ten more thousand feet of main sewer lines and uh ma- uh main water lines and et cetera, all the other great things that I know Mr. Lynn wants to do. I'm just, my recommendation in the council is it's, it's just probably not the right time when we know that we can maintain and still be good stewards to cities.
I agree. Make the motion, Jeff.
Make a motion.
Okay, I will. Um my motion will be that I, or I make a motion that the city of Kennedy go with a no new revenue tax rate.
I'll second that.
Motion by Justin, second by Brenda. Any other discussion?
Yes. Uh we're gonna have, we're gonna have to set a hearing because tax rate uh is going above the voter approval rate, so we will have to have a hearing. So we need to pick a date. Did you all wanna do that? Did you all wanna do that on the twentieth as well? You could do it after you. You could do it, you could do that at five thirty, meet with the four B at six, and then go into our workshop at six thirty if that works for everybody.
Then to add to my mo- motion, I would add that we would do a public hearing um for the no new revenue tax rate on August twentieth at five thirty P M.
Motion by Justin, second by Brenda. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion. Amanda, please, call Roam.
Counselor Breonna.
Yes.
Counselor Lynn.
Yes.
Counselor Sine.
Yes.
Counselor Conno.
Yes.
Counselor Meyer.
Yeah.
All in favor.
Motion passed. On to item number seventeen, consider and take appropriate action in regard to resolution twenty dash twenty to call and order the general election for the mayor and city council members for District Two and Four for November third, twenty twenty, providing early voting location and time and establish a time, play and manner of holding said election.
I'll make it, number seventeen.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second that motion.
Cindy.
Discussion. Mr. Lynn?
Uh Ms. Hines, are you on the phone?
Yes.
The floor is yours.
Okay. So since we have had, we have to move, uh, we moved the election from May to November. We are having to call the election once more. Meaning we will have another contract with the county for the election. Um, I do wanna, if I can, just kind of say that Governor Abbott would, um, he extended early voting. So early voting will be from October thirteenth to October thirtieth. And then election day will be on November third. Early voting will be held here at city hall. I do wanna, I found out today at, um, speaking to the elections administrator that on election day that, um, all these polls, there'll be four different polls in Kennedy open for the presidential elections, also for school board and for city council. And it will be from seven A M. to seven P M. on election day. And we will have two days in, in during early voting that will be from seven A M. to seven P M. In that alone.
So just adding to that, uh, so the council is aware. Um, I was talking with our elections administrator today. What that means is before on, uh, election day, um, we were going to have only city hall open for school board and city council. And then if somebody wanted to vote for the president or a county official or any of the ones in between, they were gonna have to go to their polling place. But our elections administrator today confirmed with the secretary of state, um, and basically on election day, you have to go to your polling place. So if, if one of your constituents wants to go vote for you on election day, they can, unless their polling place is city hall. Um, they have to go to their polling place. So that, that, that was the change in that. So I just, just to, yeah, Amanda said it, but I just still, Amanda said it very specifically and the way it's read. I just want to give it in layman's terms. Um, so ma- just to make sure everyone understands, so when you're telling your constituents, you know, where to vote on election day, you'll tell your constituents to go to their polling place. And they'll get to vote all the way from president, all the way down to your seat.
Yeah, to one location.
One location. Amanda, is there any way when voting time comes, that can be put out on the city website?
Well, the order of election has to be put on the website and it'll also be published in the newspaper.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Making sure so people understand where they have to go to go vote. That way it's fair to everybody. And if they have any questions, of course, they can call city hall and they'll guide them to where they need to go or answer any questions they may have, so. Yes, Brenda. And then we also, on the elections page on the county website, all that information will be there as well as sample ballots. Perfect. Thanks, Justin. Yes, sir.
I will make a motion that we take action in regards to resolution twenty twenty to call to order the general, um, elections for mayor uh, and city council member, uh, and council member for district two and four. November third, twenty twenty, providing early voting locations and time and establish the time, place, name of holding uh, said election.
I'll second that one. Oh, go ahead, Justin. Motion by Leslie, second by Justin. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion. Amanda, please call rope.
Counselor Breonna.
Yeah.
Counselor Lynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Sine.
Yes.
Counselor Conno.
Yes.
Counselor Meyer.
Yes.
Alvin Baker.
Motion passed. Item eighteen, consideration and possible action in regard to ordinance twenty dash eleven. And or- Article one, in general, article two, parks and recreation board. Article three, parks, providing for a penalty as a class C misdemeanor and a fine in an amount not to exceed five hundred dollars. Providing a repealing clause. Providing for severability and providing an effective date. Motion for discussion? I'll make a motion with consider it. Number eighteen. Now, second discussion, Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, counsel. One of the things the city council asked me to do was to redo all the city ordinances. Uh, to go through them and, and modify and change as needed. So that's what we're starting to do. Um, the city secretary and I put three of them on this agenda. Uh, there'll be more on other agendas as we go forward. We didn't want to try to do them all in one night. Um, this particular one, uh, there's some changes to it that we need to make, uh, that are gonna be uniform throughout anyone that contains a board. Um, I, I want to make sure I'm very transparent about that. Uh, I'm, I'm, what we do in this one, we're doing in the next one and anything else that goes with the board is gonna be done the same way. We have, um, an issue if we go through this, uh, real quick, uh, section, um, in general, um, there's just a couple of things there that we were doing is that we're gonna uh, change the number of people back to originally what it was. Uh, the board is, uh, set with too many non-members. There's no need for eleven members on any board within the city. Uh, the original ordinance was written to where it was five to seven. That's really all you need. Um, for any board, so we're modifying that. Uh, also, we are reducing the terms of service to two years from three. Uh, so that it falls in line with the city councils. Uh, we're kind of, you know, emulating here what's going on in the city, um, there. Uh, so we're looking at doing that in item A. One of the big things I noticed in, in the ordinances is that it seems as though only the seat of mayor could nominate people to a board. Um, that's not even in line with how municipalities work. Uh, anybody should be able to nominate, uh, much like tonight, we have an individual who wants to be on the P and Z board. Um, that person should be able to send a letter saying, hey, I'd like to be on the P and Z. But according to the ordinance, the mayor has to nominate that person. Um, so that's got to be changed as well. So we're changing that to where any member of the staff or any member of the governing body, including the mayor and council, or a candidate can send a letter to be nominated. Um, however, the city council retains the appointing power. So you guys always have the power to appoint. So that's kind of what we're looking at there. Um, members of the board should serve at the pleasure of the council. And, uh, you have the power to remove a board member anytime you so desire. There was some language in the ordinance that made you guys more or less have a hearing and a trial to remove anybody. Uh, that was inconsistent with the way things needed to be done. Uh, there were no term limits. So term limits, uh, we're putting in so that each member of the board can serve no more than two consecutive terms and no more than four total terms. So if you think about it, someone who wants to be on a board, they can serve a total of eight years. They just can't serve more than four years together. And that's pretty consistent with the way things are, uh, in, in municipal government. Um, the bylaw section, we left completely alone on that. That, that's something that the, uh, committees do themselves, their bylaws. And then they bring them to council and council reads over the bylaws and decides whether or not they want to approve them or not. Um, the duty, uh, section, uh, some of the language in these ordinances is very inconsistent. In some places it'll say city manager, in some places it'll say city administrator. We have to change all the administrator to manager since the seat is technically city manager. Um, so we're changing those items there. Uh, as we go into the parks one, the parks one is a big one. Uh, because you all, uh, the city of Kennedy also put the rules in here in this ordinance, the rules of the park. So we're going through the rules as well. Uh, item six, um, of the rules stated that, uh, it is unlawful to carry or display guns in the park. Well, when this was written, that was fine. But we have to amend that to add pursuant to title seven, uh, sections thirty odd six and thirty odd seven. So, um, if we're gonna impose fines and penalties, we have to post thirty odd six and thirty odd seven. So we're adding that, uh, and then of course we will put up a sign. Um, some of the language in the rules were, uh, just inconsistent with what we need to do. Um, we're making it unlawful to even possess alcohol in the park. Uh, this is a public park where children go to play. Uh, regardless of whether we have a sports complex or not, um, there's still children there and you still have vehicles. Uh, the possession of alcohol in a public park should be forbidden anyway. And, uh, that's what we're doing. Uh, we just are eliminating all the exceptions to that, uh, in here as well. Um, also, I, I, I did have the, uh, chance, I was asked a question about the sports complex and if it was going to be smoke free. Uh, the answer is yes, it is going to be smoke free. As a matter of fact, uh, we didn't have that in our ordinances, so we're adding that to the ordinance. Uh, that's gonna make the entire parks tobacco free, uh, smokeless tobacco free and substitute products and devices free, which means no vaping or anything like that. Uh, we don't want that kind of stuff around our children. Um, so we need to have that in our ordinances as well. Um, there was some other language that was kind of misleading in, in the, uh, ordinance, uh, such as it was unlawful to sleep in the park. Um, which meant you couldn't sleep in the park at noon. You couldn't take an afternoon nap. Uh, we're changing that to overnight, uh, so that it reads a little better. And then of course we're taking away, you can't camp overnight, uh, within the park. Uh, there was a clause in there that the city administrator could allow camping overnight. We're just gonna delete that altogether. We don't want people camping in the park overnight. It's just not good business. Um, and then, uh, in the violation section, uh, I know that there's a, a part in there where it's, uh, unlawful to get in the waterways and, and fish and all that kind of stuff. And they wanted to add a penalty for that. But the problem is that they added a penalty in the first part of everything. They made it a class C misdemeanor and class C misdemeanors are capped at five hundred dollars. Um, they went to the second part and they capped it at two thousand dollars. And they just left it to be read as though that was a class C misdemeanor. So we're just making all the fines five hundred dollars and we're taking that two thousand dollar fine out and just bringing more consistency to this particular ordinance. So with this ordinance right now, what you have in front of you is an, uh, an ordinance that's more in line with the way things should be. Uh, and I believe reflects the, uh, the desires and the intent of councils past as to what they wanted to see, uh, in the parks and that, as well as I believe is what you guys have expressed to me uh, over the last four months.
I have a question. So when, let's say that Blue Bonnet Days wants to have, because they've had Blue Bonnet Days at the park before. So if they wanted to have it at the park, they couldn't have alcohol? I, I just want to make sure we're clear on that because if we want to have an event down there, if we had Mayo Fest down there or whatever the case would be, they wouldn't be able to sell alcohol.
That is correct, counselor. There would be no alcoholic sales at the park. That doesn't preclude them from having a, a, I don't know, a, a roach coach, if you will, food truck, whatever they call them nowadays. Uh, off park premises, um, but at least at the city park, no, no alcohol at all whatsoever.
So I, I do have a few questions, Mr. Lynn. Um, going off of Brenda just said, um, not only Blue Bonnet Days has previously been at the park, um, but we used to have an event with the Chamber of Commerce. It was the Wine Fest. And basically we invited, um, different vineyards from all over Texas to come down here, display their wine. Um, and it was just like a little social event. We had a band and everything else. Um, would it be possible for us to prohibit alcohol in the park unless you had a permit?
Well, see, that's the way it was written, okay? The problem you get with that is then the police department has to go around asking everybody for a permit. So if there's, if you say that, sure, the Mayo Fest, the Blue Bonnet Fest, the, the wine tasting fest. That's pretty obvious they're gonna have permits. But the people who are watching Little Johnny play softball, you know, if they, they pop open a beer and there's a hundred people popping open a beer, is it really feasible for our officers to walk in and ask a hundred people, do they have a permit to have that beer? Um, how did you get in? So.
Thanks. So, but I, I'm saying it's for special events, kind of like, you know, we can't just like walk around downtown through the street like for Mayo Fest or for Blue Bonnet Days with a beer. But a- absolutely prohibit the tobacco and alcohol in the park, in the sports com- complex, in Escondido Creek Parkway, all of that. But what I'm saying is if there's a specialized event, could we have a form where the group could apply for a specialized permit notifying police saying, hey, you know, we know it's prohibited, but we're having a fundraiser, a specialized, um, and be able to allow it? I guess that's my question.
Well, what would happen in that? So we'll just say that, um, Chardonnay company wants to have a wine tasting event at the park, okay? And they go through our city ordinances and they see no alcohol. So how can they have this wine taste? Well, what they can do is they can petition the city council for a variance, for a one-time variance to the, to the ordinance. Okay? So they have to come before you guys and they have to say, this is what we want to do. We know it says this. We want to get your blessing to do this. And then the city council would ask you, like I did, and then y'all could either vote to let them have their variance or not. So you can do it that way.
Yes, sir.
And with that, does that all actually control it to only?
You know, I, I guess, if you call it a variance, and I think in the past, the city council has called it a permit. So still it could happen, but in regular day-to-day operations, it's no alcohol, no tobacco, no vaping products, which I agree with one hundred percent because, you know, we don't, we don't want Little John playing baseball and his parents are drinking alcohol or doing things that they shouldn't for the safety of the community. So I, I totally agree with that.
Yes, sir. Because I think there was a, a bit, who does the a bit, isn't it, isn't it the chamber that does the wine tasting during the summer? Is that right, Justin?
Yes, the, the chamber. It, we haven't done it in the past couple of years just because, um, we were losing money on it and it was something that the chamber cut back on. Will it happen in the future? I'm sure. Will Blue Bonnet Days possibly one day be in the park? I'm not sure. Will it be downtown Kennedy? I'm not sure. I'm just trying to like, think of all, kind of like you, Brenda. I'm just trying to think of like all the different possible events that might happen and just make sure we kind of think about it before we approve something.
Yeah, I agree. I was thinking of other things too that happen down there. Um, and I agree that it shouldn't be when there's a baseball game. And I, I agree with those things that you said. But there's other things that happen at the park that, like we said, the wine tasting. But there's other things that happen at the park that, like we said, the wine tasting that happens or possibly Blue Bonnet Days or, you know, or what if somebody had a wedding at the pavilion and they have champagne after their wedding there? I mean, you know, people do get married outside, so I'm just thinking of all those other things that could happen. And I just wanna make sure that we were clear on everything, we make the best choice.
Now Leslie, I did have another question for you, and just because I know you're a prior chamber member. As far as the term length that Mr. Lynn was talking about, um, I'm sure you're aware of that the chamber does three, three-year, three terms that are three years each. And the only reason I bring that up is, is because I know with being on the chamber currently, and I know Leslie was a tenured chamber member before. It's hard, it is very hard to get individuals to want to be on a board for free and give all this volunteer. I'm, the, I, I know you were talking about two consecutive terms of two years each for a total of two separate, total eight years total. Um, I just, I get a little bit concerned that we might not have enough participation in the community to get the individuals to wanna serve these terms. So I, although a lot of things you said tonight I agree with, I just know since I've been in the community and I, I've been in Karnes almost ten years now. It, it's hard to get people to serve, and so I just, or if any other members of the council have some feedback on this, I, I, I'd kinda like to hear what y'all think.
You're right, it is very hard to get people in the community to serve, and, um, but they, on the other side of the, on the other side of that, if we don't look to do things in a way that might draw some other people in. Instead of, you know, they're saying, well, I'm committing for three years, if they only commit for two years, they might be more interested in doing it. So we just kinda have to look at it from both sides of the coin. But it is very, very hard in this community to get people to commit to serve. They want stuff and they want things to happen, but they don't wanna be the one that is involved and help make it happen. I'm like you, Justin, I'm an outsider, uh, you know, I've been here since two thousand and three, but, um, it, it is, it is really hard to get people to commit and be involved to make a difference in our community.
I think to get people to, to, to be involved and help, but they don't wanna be the ones in charge, that's, that's the biggest thing. When you find somebody that wants to be in charge, you wanna hold on to them, because there aren't that many that will.
Cindy, Brendan, y'all's thoughts?
I'm okay with the two-year term, I, I like the idea of, uh, and I know it's hard, just being on the Lions Club, I know how that is. Uh, having the, people, you know, wanna help, but they don't wanna do the long term, but I think two years is good. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, two years seems good, I mean, people, uh, that gives them enough time, as if a three years, they might think, well, that's kind of long. Two years, we'll give them the next, uh, we'll give them a little mindset about, do I wanna do this for another term? Or do I wanna take a break and I can come back? Uh, three years can kinda stretch it and it can get tired. Some, some of these people, if it's not what they thought it was gonna be, but they don't know how to step away from it. We'll look at three years as, I've still got two years to go. Uh, it just, um, two years is, uh, is a good spot to be in when it comes to stuff like this. So I think two years is a good, is a good ti- is a good term, so.
I think they'll be more inclined.
I, oh, go ahead.
How many, Cindy, how many, um, members do you have at the Lions Club?
I believe we have eleven or thirteen, but there's only really five active.
Exactly.
And we do it all.
So I'm on the special projects committee and there's eight of us, and you know how many show up? Four, five, I mean, so you, you have people that, that say, yes, they will, and then when it's time to commit and be there at those meetings and do all the things. They don't show up, or if they're, they're not interested, or they don't, they, they'll do it, but they really don't wanna be the ones in charge. You have, we have a hard time in the city of people stepping up and saying, you know what, I'll be in charge, let's do this. And so I, I think you have to, I think we really have to leave it at that three year to hold on to those good people that are willing to step up and do the job, then, then not have, and then you're sitting there struggling trying to find somebody. That's the hardest thing, is that, okay, now we have to find somebody, oh my gosh, who are we gonna ask? And you ask and they're like, no, I really, I really don't wanna be the one in charge, you know, so.
Well, I don't know that we, I don't know.
It kinda goes both ways, you know?
One of the things that we've done, have done is advertise for people, you know, put it out there, hey, we're looking for good people, you know? We haven't, I don't think we've done that, you know?
But we haven't enabled people to do that, they're really the thing we should have told on those people for three years, but I don't know, you tell me.
Brenda.
What were you gonna say, Leslie?
What I, what I, what I was trying to say is that, what you're saying is true as far as the three years. But you're locking out so many other people that don't wanna commit, that's why they won't commit, 'cause they don't wanna commit to three years. If you have somebody that's committed to two years and you have a board that's got five people on it and, and you got four people to show up. You need to take that other person off the board, if they don't show up three times, take them off the board and, and don't even call them as part of it. And get somebody else, but that's where we have such a hard time. We, instead of moving that person and getting somebody else, we just keep their name on the list and don't worry about getting anybody else, whether they show up or not, but if they're not showing up, they're no help.
Yeah, and that's what the Lions Club does with those inactive members.
So, um, Cindy, Brenda, and, um, so something I'm thinking about, kinda hearing both sides of it, is I think the two years versus three years. My question is, is so like, me, I'm, I'm on my first term with the Chamber of Commerce. I can serve up to three terms, which would be nine years total. After nine years, and this just happened with Marie, Marie had this, she only served her nine years. But after one year, she can be nominated again and serve the board again for nine years. So is, I wonder, is there a way we can possibly meet in the middle and decide a term length? And then a maximum amount of terms, and then after one year, if that person's interested again, they can reapply? And then if the, if the, the board approves or the board, or the council approves, that person to get back on, they're allowed back on if they show more, show interest still?
I agree with that, I think we could, you guys meet somewhere in the middle.
Brenda, um, the council has no say on the board for the, uh, chamber at all.
No, no, Leslie, I know, so the, the chamber voted, so that's why, I was trying to get different scenarios. So like after three terms, so after you serve three terms, then you can be nominated by the chamber. And if the chamber members vote you in after your one year of rest, then you can serve another nine years. So I'm not forgetting years and forgetting the amount of terms, my question is, is so, for the Parks Board. Say we say it is, uh, a two-year term for a maximum of three terms. And then you have to rest for, after you serve your six years, you have to rest for at least one year. If the bo- and I don't know the exact cost, um, let's see, the Parks Board or the council, or currently the mayor makes recommendations. So if we change that, and say we solicit, okay, does anybody wanna join the Parks Board? And say, uh, Justin Meyer, who just served, you know, three terms of six years total. And then after his one year of rest of seven years, uh, on his eighth year, he's like, you know what, I, I miss the Parks Board. I still have ideas, I wanna come to the council, present those ideas and get back on the board. What if that was an option? So, so then I could serve another six years if the council kept recommending, you, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I get you.
I just think it's more difficult. Have you looked at, Justin, just leave it at two years, two, two-year terms, two consecutive terms, you cannot serve more than four. I mean, that's.
It means you get to serve four years, you take a year off.
And you get to serve four more, so we're not, I mean, it's not that.
And if, if that's what y'all, if that's what y'all think, I, I, I would like disregard the term length and the amount of terms. I was just making up an idea, I just had the threes in my head, but if, if, if that's what y'all wanna do. I'm, I'm okay with, because we, we, we have to create standards for the community to understand. But like Mr. Lynn was saying, we need to be cohesive and, and it needs to go across the board. So special projects, Parks Board, planning and zoning, everything else across the line, whatever we create, we need, I'm all about that, you have to be fair across the board. But whatever the council thinks is good, I like that, but I also, if I can make one recommendation. I don't like the idea of never being able to be back on that board, I like the, the idea of the opportunity to rest and then be able to get back on, if appointed, if elected, whatever the case might be, however, which board or which entity we wanna follow.
But I think you, this one, it does allow for a break. Cause you can't serve more than eight terms.
But what he was, what he said, after they've served, after they've served the eight years. They take a year off and come back and, and start the process over again, if they are, if they are elected or, or chosen, whatever the process is, yeah.
Well, I, I don't.
So basically, what I'm trying to say is, so basically, he, after, the way the recommendation was tonight from Mr. Lynn. Which I, is, is a good recommendation, I'm not saying it's wrong. But I, I, I've come to learn the city, like, it, it's hard to volunteer, and it's hard to get people on board. Let's not say you can only serve eight years and then you're done, because, uh, we're city council members. We can be elected into this for the rest of our life and it, it should be fair across the board. If someone doesn't wanna be a council member, that's cool, but what if they wanna be on Parks Board? And/or planning and zoning and everything else. So if we said, like Cindy was saying, a two-year lim- or a two-year term and two-term limit, so a total of four years. And after that, you can't reapply, you give it a year break, and then you did another, and then say you came back and you're like, I'm still interested, I wanna do another two terms for two years each, and then after that, like, it gives the choice of flexibility in changing out members. But it doesn't say you can't be on Parks Board for sixteen years out of twenty years if you wanted to, you know what I mean?
Right, I get that, and I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that, but I'd like to leave it at the two-year, you know, the two-year term. But if, you know, if they wanna serve thirty years, then I, I don't have a problem with that either, but.
It, there's need a break.
So we would, I said, good luck finding somebody to serve for thirty years, but, so we're gonna, yeah. So we would do two-year terms twice, so they would have a total of four years. And then they would have to have a year break, and then they can come back for another two-year term or a four-year. They're reelected for the sec- or appointed for the second two years, is that how we're saying it? And it doesn't matter the amount of terms if you, as long as they have that year break between two terms, is that right?
Right, so that, that, that's the current idea, unless somebody else has another idea, that's just an idea that I'm throwing around. So if anybody else has ideas, please let me know.
And are we okay, I have, I, I'm okay with the term thing, are we okay with just five people? I mean, maybe not.
So it's five, eleven?
No less than five.
Five or more, but no less than seven, so it's between five and seven.
Between five and seven.
Correct.
For enough, so the, so the chamber is.
I say that, is because remember, we have, you know. Go ahead, go ahead, Justin, I'm sorry.
So, the, the chamber, we're a nine-member board, but what is, what is the special projects currently, how many members are y'all?
So, there is Christine and me. So there's seven of us, but only four of us show up all the time.
You need some new board, you need some new, you need some new board members. You need to, do away with the ones that's not showing up. Because counting them as being on the board keeps the, keeps the system closed to anybody else being there.
Right.
Leslie, what about, how does Rotary work?
Go ahead.
I said, how does Rotary?
Rotary has as many members as they can get. But, they, they had gotten to trying to do something to motivate people to show up. Because they wasn't showing up, and it's the same thing. If you've got people that's not showing up, I mean, I, I resigned from the Rotary, because we wasn't accomplishing anything, because nobody was showing up.
Yeah.
You know, it's just.
That goes back to people just don't.
Cindy said, club has about, what, five members that show up?
Yes, and it's the same five, we, you know, we're, we're very, we're great, well, we're grateful for the, the ones that do show up and we work really good together. But if there ever came a time where they're not gonna show up, then we just do away with it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's all we can do.
Oh, I, so, okay, so we've determined that two terms at two years each seems fair to everybody. Next up is how many members per board? I wonder if we limit it to up to seven, so you could, you could have less, but I wonder if we limit it up to seven to let that board decide. Do you want five members, you want seven members, you want six members, whatever the case might be? And let that board have at least that option? Uh, it, it's just.
That's kinda what we're, that, I think that's what we were saying.
I think that's what it is.
The boards would, yeah, yeah, that's, that's what, it would be from five to seven, seven would be the max and five would be the minimum.
But you can't have more than seven, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because you would have to have somebody, well, if you were voting, let's think about a voting, if you only had four and you had a split vote. You know what I'm saying, so you would have to have an odd number, so whatever that odd number, you know, five being the base, and then up to seven.
That, and that, and that's what I was thinking, and then, so the, so we would, we would have to say up to seven, but it has to be an odd number. And then lastly, we need to decide, okay, are we gonna start fresh tonight? Or are we going to look back at records and say if Justin Meyer has been on a planning and zoning board for nine years? And according to this new ordinance, am I gonna be retrofitted and kicked out? Or am I gonna start fresh in?
Kick him out, yeah.
And also, and, and, and the only reason I say that, and, and just really think about this, if we kick people out tonight, they're gonna get upset. Because they've dedicated so much time and we just changed the rules, so should we?
I think it should go to the, I think it should go to the year end, I mean, you know, all boards should have a, a fiscal year end. Uh, say that the year end is December, then January, they should have new board members. So if that person's been there nine years and it come December, it's time to look for a new person, that person's gonna take a year off.
Leslie, can I?
Air trap.
Can I interrupt really quickly? One of the Parks Board members just sent me a message and asked if they could speak. Would, would the council be okay with allowing that person to speak?
Yes.
I'm, I'm fine with it, I just, I, they just reached out to me and asked if they could speak on the cycle.
I'm okay with it, Justin.
I'm good with it.
Bring him on.
Come on.
Uh. Um, city attorney, are we allowed to have a public comment on this?
Um, yes, you can go ahead and have a public comment on this, um, everyone is still able to access this call, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, okay, yeah. Yes. Yeah. Okay, yeah. You can have a public comment on this.
I have a question then for the city attorney. If, if we allow a person to call in to take a public comment on a line item without having met the criteria of the deadline at five o'clock, what about all those other people who may have wanted to call in on other line items?
So the criteria for the five o'clock deadline, um, this is, so is this person someone that, you know, is now wanting to call in? Or is this someone that you all are wanting to discuss an item with? Similar to, um, the discussion with the engineering firm prior to this? Is the person wanting to talk, is there, are they a board member? Do they have?
Yes, it, it's the board president of the parks board.
And, you know, let, let me see the, um, wording of, you know, to me, that would be a position within their official capacity, uh, that would not be necessarily a public comment. Um, and as long as it fits the term of the agenda, I think it would be okay for them to call in. But it would be them speaking in their official capacity, not, um, a public comment.
Okay, um, I sent her the, uh, call-in number and the access code, uh.
Okay.
And, uh, she might be calling in soon. It's, just so everybody knows, it's Ferris Overby. I think she's listening to the call, but I think she wants to make a public comment as well.
Okay, okay, in her, in her official capacity as the board member.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, she, I, I believe she's the board president. If she, she's on the parks board, but I think she's the board president.
Okay. Okay, to me, that is different than a public comment, that's speaking to the item, um, in her official capacity with the board.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no worries. Just to clarify, you know, with the other question that had come up. Oh, yes, of course.
I have a quick, and I know, um, we're waiting for her to call in. So did you look at this, um, amendment, that we know all the stuff that he's, uh, that Mr. Lynn has included and, and taken off? Did you see anything in there that we need to be concerned about? Have you had a chance to look at it?
Um, I have not looked at tho- that amendment so far. Um, Mr. Lynn can definitely sum that to me. Just through your discussion, I, I did not hear anything of concern. I mean, it's sort of things that is up to your discussion and kind of the best thing for the community. Um, you know, and the permits as you go on for these different events, you can definitely handle on a case-by-case basis. That's very common in other situations as well. Okay.
The one question I did have, if we did impose this tonight, which I don't think is a bad idea because we need to impose terms and term length, um, other provisions with that. But my question is, what do cities normally do? They, when they decide to change, um, board, um, what am I trying to think of? When they're trying to change a board rules, do they make them proactive that night or effective that date? Whereas, like, if a board member had served six years, we can only serve now four years. Um, is it, does their four years start that date? Or does it start the date they started to serve? Like, what, what, what's normal in this spectrum?
Typically, it would start the date that the new people come in to serve. Um, that would be, I think, the way that it would most make sense also for just everyone also, um, you know, finishing up their terms, and that would make it the easiest for the city to track and not offer problems of continuation.
Okay, I, I, I just wanted an attorney side of it, unbiased and everything else. But, um, that, that makes sense, I appreciate it. Amanda, has Ferris joined in yet?
No, not yet.
And Mr. Lynn, I, I got disconnected a minute ago. I think my phone after a, a, a little over an hour, it cuts out. But just to kinda go back a little bit, cause I missed some of the conversation about, uh, the alcohol and things like that. And so they could, uh, they, people could get a permit, as long as they come to the council, presented to the council that they're having an event and they may have alcohol or whatever, they can do that and it's at the council's discretion to approve it or not. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that would be correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
The one comment, it was, it was a, it was a variance that we were saying we would do.
Right. I just wanted to make sure, like I said, my phone cut out and I missed part of the conversation.
All right, quick question, Mr. Lynn. Um, the other boards that we have around here, have you, uh, spoke to them and seen why they have certain members on their boards? A certain amount of members or?
Wait a minute, one more time, counselor?
I didn't understand.
Have, um, the ci- have cities talked to, uh, other boards? Have, have you talked to other boards of why they have certain amount of people, certain amounts on their boards?
No, sir, no. I'm not talking to the boards asking how many they have. I was going through the ordinance and, and, right, I'm looking at the black and white paper and seeing where we are on things and trying to make everything uniform. So the, the premise would be kinda along the lines of what the attorney was saying. And, and to kind of address Counselor Myers' question, would be this. If you have a person who is currently serving, uh, they would continue to serve. The only people who would be excluded from everything would be people whose terms have expired. So i- if you're currently serving, and we say you can only serve a maximum of four terms of two, and you're in year number nine, you're not gonna get kicked off of the board as long as your year number nine is current. So that's, that's, that way, that way, we're not taking people and saying, okay, thanks, bye. You know, but people whose terms expired, well, then they would be off. And that would apply uniformly across all boards. And that's it, that's only the right and fair thing to do.
I hear you. Amanda, is Miss Overby on?
Not yet.
Do you wanna table this and move on, or do you wanna? And come back?
Okay, I don't think that was her.
I'm on, Abanda. Can I speak?
Yes, ma'am, Ferris, go ahead and.
Okay, I was on the public, uh, public comments from the first. I had just asked, we had, we had just asked as a group if they would, um, please let us have a meeting with the city manager so we were more aware of what was going on. As far as the number of people, we have eleven, yes. They are glad to be on the parks board. They are good workers on the parks board. We have tried five, we have had tried seven, and we did not have a quorum when we had just that few. Since we have had eleven, we have a quorum every month that we meet. Which makes it nice because they're people that want to be on there. And yes, I am one that's been on there for years, but we like to see the, uh, finishing of things that we started, like the sports complex, like things that are going on in the park. I understand, and the Parks Committee understands the other things that are being proposed. But we just wanted to sit down with the coun- with the city manager, Manager Lynn, and go over line per line so we know what to do. We did put on Facebook and different places of everybody that, cause we lost two people. We lost one to a death and we lost another person to sickness. And so we put a message on there and we had three people apply and we voted for the people that we won. And they came on and they are delighted to be there.
So you're saying eleven people works better for you, um, because of the time when some people can't be there, you guys still have a quorum, is that correct?
Well, five people and seven people do not work with a quorum because we are a small town. And so they're young people and they have volleyball games, they have, uh, work going on and they couldn't come. Well, you know, if you only have five people and you don't have a quorum, well, there you've taken up a night and you didn't have a quorum. And so we've had, with eleven people, we have had a quorum all the time. And seemingly, everybody is delighted to be a park recreation board member.
Ferris, it's Justin. Um, so you, you, I think you've heard part of our discussion about term length. And, and, and so can you enlighten us? Um, you know, we're, we're trying to clean things up and give opportunities to other people. And you've done a fantastic job with the parks board. But I'm, we're, we're trying to figure out ways for different members in the community to serve the parks board. And so we've been looking at different ways, do we put it at a term total? Or do we, um, allow a term length and then after that you can reapply? Like, what are, what are your, what are your thoughts, you know, after serving the park for so long? What, what do you think about the different things?
Oh, I think you have a term, I think the term, I don't know how the rest of the board would feel about that. That's why we wanted to, as a board, meet with Mr. Lynn so we could just go over. And then, of course, you all vote at the way you want it to vote. You're our boss.
Okay, okay, um, would, would you, as the parks board president, um, feel more comfortable if we just tabled the item tonight? Um, maybe had a meeting with Mr. Lynn and just understand that the, the council's not trying to take away any privilege or any title from anybody, but try to work with the parks board and, and with the future of Kennedy and just try to look at it as a way of, you know, allowing more opportunity. And so like, if you met with Mr. Lynn, if you had the opportunity to talk to him about term lengths and, and not necessarily cutting it off forever, cause I, I'm a firm believer with the chambers doing. You know, it, it, it's hard, it, I, I know, small community, it's hard to get people. And so maybe create a term length of, like, what we were proposing is three or two, two-year terms. So total of four years. After that, you rest for a year and then you can come back to the board and get back on it. Would that be something that you would be willing to discuss with Mr. Lynn and, um, I mean, Mr. Lynn, I'm sorry?
Uh, yes, sir, that's what, I was one of the public atta- public comments. But you had so many others that y'all didn't hear mine. But it was, as President, Ferris Overby and the Parks and Recreation Board were asking the mayor and the city council to please table or take no action on item number eighteen until we, as a board, could meet with our city manager to be aware of the content of item eighteen. But I don't guess y'all heard it, so.
We, we did he- hear a comment from Albert, um, and I don't know how the rest of the council feels. So if any of the other council members wants to join in on this?
I kind of agree with, with what Ms. Overby is saying. I think too that maybe if Mr. Lynn and, and, and Ms. Overby's, uh, members sit down and visit with him and kinda, so Mr. Lynn can get an idea of what, what Kennedy's like. I mean, you've been here for a little while, but it's like Justin has said, has, like Cindy has said, it's hard to get people to stay and to help. I think if maybe you sit and visit with them, Mr. Lynn, and kinda get the idea of, oh, yeah, I didn't see that point. Or I didn't, I don't know that because I'm, I'm new to Kennedy. Maybe we can come up with something that will benefit everybody across the board and we can come to something that will work for everybody. So I agree, let's table this, let's let them talk and kinda get some ideas going and then come back to us and we can, we can make a really good decision that's fair for everybody and it'll benefit Kennedy in the, as a whole.
So are you making a motion to table it or are you just talking about?
I can, if, I can, if you, you all are okay with that, I'll make the motion that we table item, uh, number eighteen until Mr. Lynn and the parks board can sit and visit.
I'll second that.
Motion by Brenda, second by Leslie. Any other discussion?
I'm just tired, it's ten after eleven, I'm sleeping.
There's no other discussion. Well, go ahead, go, Justin.
No, I was seconding being sleepy.
There's no other discussion. Amanda, please call roll.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Oliver Vera.
On item nineteen, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance twenty twelve in an ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, admitting code of ordinances, chapter two administration, article three, boards, committees and commissions, division three, planning and zoning commission, section two dash one forty-one created, established, members, and section two dash one forty-two offers powers providing a repeating clause, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Should we table this also, kinda, cause we wanna do everybody the same? You know, we wanna do everybody the same, so should we just table this also?
Amanda?
I think you're right, if we're gonna.
Go ahead, Leslie.
I think if we, if, that's, that's, that's true, if we're gonna table the first one, we need to table all three of them until everybody gets a chance to visit with, um, William and give him their insight. And that's kinda what this is all about, everybody, we, we're encouraging input. So let's do the thing that creates the input. So we do have some people that wanna be on these boards and wanna get involved on the boards.
Motion to table item nineteen?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion that we table item eighteen.
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Brenda, second by Leslie. Any other discussion? No other discussion, please call roll.
Counselor Brianna?
Go, go ahead, Justin. Only thing I have to say is, maybe we should have the planning and zoning board also meet with Mr. Lynn. Like, make that a part of the motion, you know what I mean? Just so we're doing the same for our board.
Okay, I'll make, I'll change that motion, so I'll make the motion that we table item nineteen so that the planning and zoning, uh, commission has a chance to visit with Mr. Lynn to give them their input.
Okay, this, Brenda's still second by Leslie?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? There's no other discussion, Amanda? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I actually have something to say. I was out of the room, I was out of the room here, y'all made a catch on the prior one. I want the city council to know that when Ms. Overby spoke, she admitted to the city council and the city attorney that she violated the city ordinance. Even the city ordinance that is existing, the one that is still intact because you all tabled. the one that is still intact because you all tabled what was on the agenda. Only the mayor could nominate people to be on that parks board. Mrs. Overby and the parks board could not run an advertisement to seek for people. Only the mayor, and then the mayor had to bring them before the council and the council had to appoint. The parks board did not have the authority to autonomously advertise and appoint people. Ms. Overby admitted she violated the current ordinance. So yes, I have a problem with everything that's happened tonight. I have a major problem with that. You hired me to, you hired me to uphold the ordinances of the City of Kennedy and they have been violated. So I'm just saying, y'all want to table it, y'all table these, that's fine. Um, I work for you, um, you know, but you need to understand that what just happened in that other one, I do not agree with at all, one hundred percent.
Mr. Lynn, I completely understand that. I think the problem is it's an out-of-date ordinance and maybe we should look at it and get it to be as old where the City of Kennedy prevails from it. So what, I, 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 I understand what you're saying and I understand there's a flaw in the ordinance. I think what we would like to see is talking to the board, finding out what exactly works for the City of Kennedy as well as those board members and as well as for the planning and zoning and everything else. So I, 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 I understand you found a flaw and we commend you for doing that. I just think that we need to look at that and figure out what works for the City of Kennedy. And that, and that's really all I have to say, um, but thank you for
I'm sorry, I'm just saying, I have a problem with what just happened here tonight. Okay? And I have a major problem with it. This isn't, this goes beyond me and the parks board or me and the P and V talking about what works for them and what works for the City of Kennedy. What just transpired supersedes all of that. You had an ordinance, whether it was outdated or not, a city ordinance that stated only the mayor could appoint. And the city ca- only the mayor could nominate and the city council appoint. And a board president admitted in an open meeting, it's being recorded, that they did not follow that ordinance. They circumvented the city council of the City of Kennedy. I have a problem with that.
And I, I understand your
It's not happening. And, and, and I have a problem now that it's been tabled.
Also, do not
The tabling of the ordinance, the tabling of the ordinance after the statement that's made gives confirmation and approval to the action. And I am raising my concern as your city manager, who's been hired to uphold the ordinance of this town, that I don't agree with it. I don't agree with this transparency. I will do whatever you tell me to do.
Wait, so what I'm trying to say is, so you heard a board president say that they advertised for the position. You heard her say that they found some people that were recommendable. But then you also heard tonight that the, uh, city mayor has been inactive in his duties. So although we found some flaws, what I am trying to say is tonight is that we are trying to move forward and fix the, the, the ordinances and the bylaws for each of the boards, including the parks board, and figuring out what works for the City of Kennedy. And so something that might have been established, I, and I don't know when those bylaws were established, but something that would have been established back when might have been great then, but not, might not be great now. So we're just trying to work forward from that. We're not saying that everything that happened tonight is perfect, we're just trying to move forward. So I understand, I, I completely understand your concerns, um, but we're trying to move forward from that. And so we're not saying what is currently happening is perfect. What we're trying to see is we're trying to evaluate the situation and move forward.
And make it perfect.
And the reason that we had this on the agenda, and the reason we had this on the agenda is so we could fix it so that they're not waiting on the mayor and only the mayor to put somebody on their board, or whatever board it is. And that's the objective.
I understand that, councilors, and, and I know that's what we had on the agenda. And I understand that maybe you may wish for me to speak to them about this. But you need to please hear what my objection is referencing. Okay? We have ordinances on our books, however antiquated those ordinances are, is not relevant. The fact that an ordinance exists and it's the most recent ordinance means it's still got to be upheld. And when someone blatantly admits that they circumvented that ordinance to the body that is responsible for upholding it, I have a problem with that. There is no gray area, it is black or white.
So let me ask you this, I understand what you're saying, so you're telling me that you're not going to talk to them now?
I am saying that at this
I need you to answer that question directly. I need you to answer yes or no. Are you going to talk to these groups so we can get this in order? That's my question, yes or no?
I'll talk to them. I'm not going to guarantee how it's going to go, but I'll talk to them.
Because I, I think it's one of those deals where the parks board maybe didn't know that they were doing something incorrectly. So instead of incriminating them, let's educate them and help our community.
Exactly, because we're, we're a team here, the parks board and the, and the Co- Code of Ordinances and everybody, the city council and you and Amanda, we're a team. We're here for Kennedy, Texas, we're going to be here to make Kennedy great. So it's not, well, I found this, well, like Justin said, let's educate some people, hey, look, this is what the ordinance says, and we're trying to fix this to make this right. We're not trying to condemn people and run people off because we have a lot of good people here in Kennedy that are willing to work for Kennedy. So let's keep that momentum, let's fix it and move on. I, I understand you have a problem with it, but I need you to be fair to them, talk to them, listen to them, tell them what you feel about it. I, I get that, you're going to tell them, hey, look, this was wrong. But I want you to be respectful also, because right now, you're not being
Oh, council, I apologize.
These people, wait a minute, these people work hard for Kennedy, they volunteer their time for Kennedy, just like the rest of us do. It's past eleven o'clock and we're still on the phone with you, trying to get everything done, and you're going to come across as being disrespectful? I don't like that, I will not tolerate that. I get it was wrong, what she may have done, but we're moving forward, like Justin said. I need you to sit down and visit with these people and come up with a good plan and come back to us and be respectful, just like you want respect, you have to give that respect. I will tolerate anything else.
Is the attorney, is the attorney still on the line?
Yes, I am, still on the line.
Okay, I just got a quick question, referencing back to what Mr. Lynn, what Mr. Lynn said. He said the stuff about Ms. Overby violating and stuff, can you clear that? Where's, where's the stuff that was violated that way in the future? We don't make this mistake and we can make that clear in the, when he has the meeting with, uh, with the parks board or whoever for the parks board that he discusses with?
Yes, definitely, Mr. Lynn and I can work on that together.
Okay.
Beautiful.
Okay. And Brendan, I think what Mr. was talking about was the advertisement for parks board members when technically the only member that can nominate someone to the parks board is the mayor, which I understand that. Um, but we have to understand, we are very busy individuals, we're a small-town community. And so I don't think Ms. Overby knew that she was doing any wrong. I think she was just trying to advocate for the parks board and trying to find a suitable person. So I, I just, I, I, I'm not picking anybody's side, I'm pro-Kennedy, pro-city manager, pro-council. Let's all, uh, I, what I would like to see is let's all work together and find the resolution. So with that being said, um, anything to say, but they're more than welcome.
Okay.
I agree with you, Justin, we need to work together, we're a team. Plain and simple. Let's figure this out, let's get it right. You know, let's fix it. So, uh, what, so we're on nineteen, is that right? We're on nineteen, is that right, or we're, we're on the?
We're still on nineteen, yes.
Yeah, there was a
We, we had the motion, there was a motion and a second to table it.
Yeah, my motion still stands.
Okay.
And the second still stands.
Uh, any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call Row.
Council Bionis?
Yes, yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Council Stein?
Yes.
Council Conno?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. Item number twenty, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance twenty dash thirteen, an ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, City Council, Section Two dash thirty-two, reimbursement of out-of-town expenses, providing a repealing clause, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Want to discuss?
To consider item twenty on the agenda?
By Leslie?
I'll second.
Second by Justin, discuss.
We changing on the out-of-town reimbursement?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn, you want to go ahead and?
Is there a presentation? I know we have this
Yeah, I stepped up for a second, sorry. Um, real simple, the city council had passed a resolution, uh, an ordinance, uh, a while back, um, that was in line with the personnel policy at the time, uh, outlining the expenditures the city council could make whenever they were attending, uh, functions on behalf of the city. All we're simply doing with this is just updating it to the dollar amounts that the city council approved in the personnel manual. Um, and just making it uniform so that everybody who is traveling on behalf of the city is being reimbursed for the exact same thing. Hey?
And those amount, this one we should breakfast seven fifty, lunch twelve, dinner twenty-five. Those are ima- the amounts that are allocated for each meal, correct?
Yes, sir, that's, that's per meal, and they don't roll over. So if you don't eat breakfast, you don't get it for lunch. And you don't, if you don't use, if you don't use it in a day, you don't get to roll over the next day, it's choose or lose.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there's a list of things that, you know, the city won't reimburse.
Beverage, beverages, spa, health clubs, spas, dry cleaning laundry, all that stuff on the list, yeah. Council members, have any, y'all got, um, any questions for this item?
Uh, this one, this one we should be able to do and move on.
Oh, yes.
So I'm going to make a motion that we take action in regard to ordinance, ordinance twenty dash thirteen, an ordinance for the City of Kennedy, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, City Council, Section, uh, two dash thirty-two, reimbursement of out-of-town expense, providing a repealing clause, providing for a, uh, severable, severability and providing an effective date.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, Amanda, go ahead, what? Was there a question? All right, Amanda, please call Row.
Council Bionis?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Council Stein?
Yes.
Council Conno?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. Item one C one, consideration of possible action in regard to appointing Jeffrey Freeman to the City of Kennedy Planning and Zoning Commission for a two-year term beginning September first, twenty twenty, to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Got a motion for discussion? Are we going to go discuss this, are we going to, or is this part of the table from the other item? That was Parks Board as well, plan, uh, Planning and Zoning.
The plan, planning, planning and zoning, do they, do they have room for another member?
They, they do have room, however, um, the ordinance clause that the mayor would be the one to recommend them. So this item will have to be ruled until, until the ordinance is renewed or, or if the mayor does, um, do, give a recommendation.
Okay. And I'm going to make a motion that we table twenty-one?
I'll second.
Motion by Leslie, second by Justin, any other discussion? There's no other discussion? Amanda, please call Row.
Council Bionis?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Council Stein?
Yes.
Council Conno?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. Moving on to item twenty-two, consideration of possible action in regard on moving the September eighth, twenty twenty, regular ca- city council meeting due to the Labor Day holiday. Discussion?
I want to move it to the following Tuesday.
Are we not going to move it to the
I'll move it to the win.
I'll make a motion on item twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Second the motion.
Now, discussion.
So do we want to move it to the, um, to the fifteen, or we just want to move it over to the night?
I would prefer not the third Tuesday, because that's when I have a chamber meeting. So whatever the council wants to do, it's fine, I'm just saying, if it is the third Tuesday of the month, I will not be there.
Have it that week and just have it another day?
Yeah, we can have it any other day, I'm just saying the third Tuesday of the month at five-thirty, we have our chamber meetings and
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
So can we put on the night? Enough time with the holiday?
Amanda, Mr. Lynn?
For me, whichever day is fine, I'm not sure if Mr. Lynn has a preference.
Mr. Lynn, do you have a certain day that will work out better?
Whatever the council desires.
Okay.
The ninth, then.
Leslie, I'm-
Go to the eighth. Okay. All right, then I'm gonna make a motion that we move the meeting from September eighth to September ninth as our regular scheduled council meeting, uh uh due to the Labor Day holiday.
I'll second that. Yeah.
Discussion? Is there any, there's no other questions, Amanda, please call roll.
Counselor Bionis?
Yeah.
Counselor Wynn? Counselor Wynn?
Yeah.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. Item twenty-three. Time is now eleven thirty-two PM, the City Council will adjourn a closed session under Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point zero seven four, personal matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duty, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, mayor, conduct, becoming an elected official.
Are you gonna send us the number we need to call in on?
Yeah, so what I will do now is I will um text um the attorney and all the council members and Mr. Lynn the phone number to call in, and then once the executive session is over, we will come back to this call. And I will post it, I'm gonna try to post it on Facebook at least a couple minutes before we get back online so people have enough time to get back on.
Yes, Amanda, real quick before we get off of the public call, I did get a a request that if we could post it a couple minutes before, that the citizens would appreciate it.
Yeah, I I the last time we had it, I know we kind of, we kind of went back into it pretty fast and I saw that some citizens were, you know, they didn't get, they didn't have enough time to come in, so that's why I said, give it a couple of minutes for, to give everybody time to come back in.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, so I'm gonna go ahead and send the number now.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn into executive session to um, item twenty-three.
I'll, 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 go ahead, Justin. Hey, well, does the man- man- is for roll?
Yes, Counselor Bionis?
Yeah.
Counselor Wynn?
Yeah.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Okay, can you send us the number? That'll work.
Okay.
Everybody here, Amanda?
We have, we have the five council members and then we have, we have six, seven people um citizens that are listening, listening in. So I don't know if y'all wanna wait a couple more minutes, or if y'all wanna go ahead and start, that's completely up to you.
What does the city attorney have to say, can we get started?
You all can go ahead and get started.
Okay, I think a motion, we come out of, uh we, I think a motion, we go back into open session to Texas Government Code, Section five five one zero seven four, personal matters to deliberate appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duty, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Discussion and possible action on mayor matters discussed in executive session.
Can we hear what the city attorney has to say?
Excuse me?
My question was- Go ahead, Brandon.
No, go ahead, Justin, what'd you say?
My question was, can we hear what the city attorney has to say?
Um, I had already spoken in the executive session about this, um, I'm unsure exactly what you're asking right now in this moment.
My, my question is, what is the council's action as far as what we can do?
So I think that you all have already, uh we've gone, we've gone back into open session right now, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. So you all, I think, are already, um, you know, from what we discussed in executive session, about to make your motion.
Thanks, Brandon, I mean, uh, Justin.
Who are attending a motion?
Brandon?
Hello?
Brandon, um, on-
Yes.
On number twenty-four and reconvening into into regular session, you made a motion, oh, I just need a second and then we need to call roll. And then we can go to number five to make a motion.
Okay, okay, sorry, Amanda, number twenty-four, reconvene into regular session.
And you had made a motion already, so now we just need a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Amanda, call roll.
Counselor Bionis?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yeah.
Counselor Sines? Counselor Sines?
Amanda.
Okay, there you are. Now I can hear you, I just realized I had you on mute, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. And um, Counselor Kano?
Yes.
And Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay. Item twenty-five, discussion and possible action on mayor matters discussed in executive session. Do you have a motion?
I'm gonna make the motion, Brandon, to censure commentary made by the mayor in public session as heard tonight, August the twelfth, at this city council meeting of the City of Kennedy.
Do we have a motion by Cindy?
A second by Justin.
Second by Justin? Any just- Any discussion on this?
Justin, I think you need, I think you need to re- I think you need to repeat her motion.
Yes, Justin.
Oh, yes, gotta repeat Cindy's motion.
I'll second Cindy's.
You have to read it.
You have to repeat it, Justin. Still there, Justin?
Nah, I'm here.
Okay, okay.
I will second. Actually, hold on. Can I just say, I'll second agenda item number twenty-five, twenty-five?
No, it has to be read, and it's the same thing that she said.
Do you want me to read it again?
Yeah.
Is that a yes?
Yes, please.
Okay, my motion was to censure commentary made by the mayor in public session as heard tonight, August the twelfth, at this city council meeting of the City of Kennedy.
And I'll second that motion.
Justin, you understand you have to repeat what she said.
And I said I'll second that motion.
But you have to read it, Justin.
Cindy, I I'll take care of it.
Let's go ahead.
I'll second, I'll second the motion to censor ceremony, um, censor commentary made by mayor in public session as heard tonight, August twelfth, at the city council meeting of the City of Kennedy.
Motion by Cindy, second by Leslie. Any discussion? If there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call roll.
Counselor Bionis?
This we can answer, yes, correct?
Yes.
Oh, this, this, okay, yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yeah.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. Item twenty-six, adjourn, a motion adjourned?
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Y'all have a great night, great job tonight, y'all, I know it's late, get some rest, and y'all stay safe.
Thank you, all right, night.
Night.